Well, it is 6:30. If everyone's good.
I think I noticed after that he had he had a newer Subaru in his driveway afterward. Sorry.
6:30, we'll start.
Apologize, Matt.
No worries. All right, we'll start off with a roll call members for tonight's meeting. Starting with myself, Matt Yen, present. Susan Wood.
Here.
John Crist.
Here.
Phil Lamarru.
Here.
Michael Bouchard.
Present.
Paul McCann.
Here.
Neil McGyver, did you hear anything from Neil?
Neil did advise me that he is out of town this evening, unfortunately.
All right, Neil McGyver excused. Zach Tyrell will not be joining us tonight. Phil is here. And Bradford Puffer.
Yo.
All right, excellent. Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to review the minutes from October 2nd.
Do you want to seat Bradford since Neil's not here?
Yes, can we? Yeah.
Yeah.
Should probably should.
We are down one member.
Yep, let's do it.
Bradford, would you like to be seated as a voting member tonight?
Love to.
All right. May the record reflect Bradford Puffer is seated as a voting member. Thank you.
Right in. There's an inconsistency in the, sorry, are we reviewing the minutes? So sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two minutes.
All right. There's an inconsistency in the way that Judy's name is spelled.
Oh, really?
Either a Y or an I.
Whereabouts are we?
Uh, second page, the first paragraph, Judy is spelled G, excuse me, not G, J-U-D-Y. And in new business and bold, the board will meet with J-U-D-I. So.
Good catch.
Don't know. Which way is it spelled?
Uh, with an I.
With an I.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the page numbers. I don't know if that was there
Oh, yeah.
last time, but it did.
It's very helpful.
Very helpful, thank you.
Favor.
When I remember.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of October 2nd as amended.
Second.
And if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstentions. Thank you very much. Joseph, any communications?
All right, a few communications. I'll start with the short and I'll, I'll move through to the long, if that works for you all. The, the easy one, and at this time, I'm afraid most of us won't be able to make it to Sandburn, but we did receive a notice, and we did put this on the website, which was, I think, a good suggestion from last time. One of these cell tower notices for proposed new personal wireless service facility on Cadillac Lane in Sandburn. And generally, a public hearing was scheduled for this evening at 7:00 PM. But we did, oh, Dan, we're getting a message from someone on Zoom that they cannot hear the audio. I don't know if that's something on my end.
Are we just muted here?
Is it just this mute on the TV? Probably. Good catch.
Oh, tricky.
Ooh, backwards.
There you go.
Can you hear us now, Will?
I got you now. Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you for letting us know.
Great, thank you.
So generally, town of Sandburn has notified us of that hearing, October 16th, 7:00 PM, for that personal wireless service facility. And since it is a cell tower under the RSA, surrounding towns are also notified. I'm not sure if anybody from the community did attend or, or is planning to attend, but we did include that on the website in case anybody.
Just gonna say, if anybody is so inclined to attend, there's still time to get there.
There is.
It starts in half an hour.
If you're watching this live, you probably could make it down. Drive safely. But the other, so number two, we did receive a letter here with regards to the charrette, Plan New Hampshire Charrette Program. They've reached back out to us and have given us a few date options and asked if there are any that particularly work well or don't work well. And I wanted to bring that to you all since between the members of this board, you guys know the community quite well. And if there are any dates that maybe there's something of note in the community that we'd want to avoid. The dates that they have outlined as possible options are April 10th and 11th, April 17th and 18th. These are all Friday-Saturday combos. April 24th and 25th, though it's noted that would include the Saturday leading into school break, so best to avoid if possible. May 8th and 9th, May 15th and 16th, May 22nd and 23rd, though that is Memorial Day weekend, so also good to avoid.
When is graduation?
And then the 29th and 30th. I'm, I'm not sure of that date.
It's probably the first weekend in May, but I can check.
So they did recommend leaving out the weekend of Easter and the weekend of New Hampshire School Vacation Week. But those other dates, I don't know if there's any other things, that's probably a good one to keep in mind, graduation weekend. Any of those that sound like there's any conflict or any that sound particularly good to folks?
May 9th is commencement.
Commencement, probably good to avoid.
And can we have a, like, can you send those to us and have a few days to, like, give you some potential feedback?
Yeah.
If we see anything?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I can do that. And if you just wanna, they are meeting again next, in, two weeks from now, so not before our next meeting. But I can send out that list of dates, and if anybody is aware of any conflicts and just wants to shoot me an email about it, I can relay all of that back to Plan New Hampshire. And obviously, they can't guarantee it's going to depend also on their availability, but they wanted to get a sense from us of our availability too.
Yeah, if we can get back to you with, like, crossed off dates.
Yeah.
This doesn't work for our community, this doesn't work.
That would be great.
We'll narrow it down to, so we move forward.
Yeah. All right, thank you all. That's a good suggestion. I will do that. And then we have, just to, you know, last, last time I'll mention this, the hearing for the proposed 10-year transportation plan at the Pease Public Library, 6:00 PM on Monday, the 20th, that's this coming Monday. There's also opportunity to participate online. So if you want to either zoom in or submit written testimony, you can do so on the DOT website. Then I have a brief update communication, sort of, at the Select Board meeting. There was the first hearing on the Select Board's acceptance of the cross-access easement on the Midstate parking lot. This is on the upper parking lot on the downtown Main Street facility that was approved by the board about three years ago. The, the upper parking lot cross-access easement would allow for ultimately, if the town chose to do so, connection between Gold Terrace across that parking lot to other potential parking lots, which could be developed on that elevation, or some other type of accessway between Gold Terrace and either Webster Terrace or Main Street. So the first hearing was held by the Select Board. They do have another, their next meeting will also have a public hearing on this. And then the meeting following that will be the meeting where, under statute, they have the authority to, to vote on it. Only after those two public hearings, that, you know, between 10 and 14 days apart, can they then schedule a date between seven and 14 days after the second hearing to vote on it. So it's a pretty stringent timeline, but the easement language was reviewed by the town attorney and approved. There is a stamped, surveyed plan showing the easement location. So at this point, it really does just need to be accepted by the Select Board, assuming that after the public hearing, they decide to do so.
Is this the easement from Midstate?
From Midstate to the town. Yep, that's correct.
Ask a question?
Please, yeah.
Regarding the Gassit hearing.
Yes.
Do you have any words of explanation for either us on the board or anybody who might be watching this now or on replay video? As to what sorts of things are appropriate to say, like, speaking from our own personal perspective about the importance of these projects? And I know there are some moving kind of targets on their end.
Yeah.
And I'm just kind of curious if you could speak or anyone can speak to what to expect and what to, like, be prepared to say.
Before we move on to that, are there any questions about the easements for, about the easement for anyone? I do have one question I want to cover before I move on.
Yeah.
Does that easement still include parking, public parking in their parking lots after business hours?
That was one of the conditions of approval. It's not specifically covered in the easement, but one of the conditions of approval of the zoning board's approval was to continue to allow off, continue to allow parking outside of normal business hours, something to that effect, by other area businesses as offered by the applicant. So the zoning board did include that as a condition, which the Planning Board incorporated those conditions by reference into the site plan. So that was a condition of approval, and they did update their plan to include that condition listed as, as requested by the board.
And the current verbiage is still, if I recall, the original verbiage was kind of vague as to what business hours actually mean?
Let me, I, I can read you that condition if you'd like. That, that would probably be easier here.
Joseph, while you're looking for that, can I, can I remind the board that, that in the hearing, it came up that this easement was actually a condition of approval of the site plan from 2006 that never got recorded. And we, we followed up on it in their most recent site plan. So there's, there's history to this.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good catch. I mean, in, in 2006, exactly, the Gold Terrace was abandoned or, or vacated by the town roughly. It might have been 2005 that the town vacated it, but it was, it was just before that parking lot was developed. And in 2006, as a part of all of those moving pieces of vacating the portion of Gold Terrace that went the rest of the way down to Main Street and giving it to, at the time, the bank, there was a condition placed by the Planning Board to give the town that easement on the site plan to create those parking lots. So yeah, exactly, the board carried that over.
It wasn't done at the time.
Correct. There was no easement at that time.
All right, thank you.
And then the, the zoning board, their special exception condition number two was the applicant shall continue to allow off-hours use of the parking lots by nearby businesses as stated in the application for special exception.
So that was a different entity or di- different process through the easement, but I was confused.
But it was a part of the approval overall.
Those are my cues.
Sure about that, John?
But it is, it is a great place to park if there's ever an event at the monkey and you're trying to get to Main Street.
Great overflow parking.
Yep. Walk down the stairs and you're there.
There's no other questions regarding the easement or the parking. Back to the Gassit.
All right, so the, the Gassit hearing, it's a, it's a good question because it's a little bit of a, it's not a process that comes up all that much, but every two years, the state draws up a new 10-year transportation plan. And there are a lot of things in the 10-year transportation plan, but broadly speaking, it is a vision for how the state will allocate its transportation resources over the next 10 years. Part of that is including projects that are advanced by towns through regional planning commissions, and then ultimately advanced by the Executive Council, signed into law by the legislature. So part of it is basically a list of projects that towns have proposed and regional planning commissions have supported, which gets signed into this 10-year plan. There are other parts of the plan too that come from other funding sources. There's TAP, which is Transportation Alternatives, and that's under kind of a separate process. CMAT, congestion mitigation, air quality. All together, though, it basically functions as a tentative list of the next 10 to 12 years of transportation projects for the state. So there are a couple of parts to that. It is first drafted by DOT, taking into consideration new additions proposed by towns and regional planning commissions. That is, the 10-year plan is drafted by DOT, who then gives it to the Gassit, which is the Executive Council plus the Commissioner of DOT. And then the, the Gassit has the opportunity to take that plan and keep it as it is or to change it. They decide how to do that by holding public hearings around the state to hear input from the communities in terms of what their thoughts are on the vision that is being carried out by this plan. So as far as what is on the, you know, what's something that's within the scope of this meeting? Generally, it is fairly specific to what should or shouldn't be included on the plan project-wise. That's kind of the main thing that they're looking for. But other input about priorities that they should look at in determining what gets onto the plan, recommended strategies for funding have all been discussed at various times. So there, there are a lot of things you could mention, but the main thing that they're trying to do is come up with a revised draft of the 10-year plan, which they will then present to the governor and legislature for approval. Once it's signed into law by the legislature and the governor, it's basically effective, but that doesn't commit funding to it. So it is worth noting that it, it's not necessarily committing 12 years' worth of funding, but it is sort of laying out projects over the next 12 years. They, of course, don't know what funding will be in 12 years, so it, it is, once you get that far out, it is kind of an estimate, just doing their best to anticipate what they will be able to do based on, you know, past trends, current levels, things like that. So that's kind of a long answer, but there's a lot wrapped into these hearings, and it could be advocating for or against specific projects that are in the plan, but.
And as a reminder, we had Smithbridge Road pulled from the plan, it was already accepted.
Yep.
And we had another one denied entry into the plan.
Exactly.
Which is the North Main Street. North Main Street.
Okay, that was my question, was if, was Smithbridge Road further up on the 10-year plan than North Main Street? So yes, because.
Yeah, and it was pulled.
So Smithbridge Road had already been signed into two previous 10-year plans, I believe. So it was probably four to five to six years into the cycle with engineering scheduled to begin in 2027. So that was a little ways further in the, and that was to upgrade the intersection of Tenney Mountain Highway and Smithbridge Road. The other project that we're talking about is the North Main Street project. So realigning the sort of sloping curve in the area of Armory Road, Toby Road, and where the Plymouth State Parking Lot is, up to the Green Bridge and North Main Street, and then also extending sidewalks and broader shoulders from basically where Main Street intersects with Toby Road, all the way up to Fairgrounds Road. So that project was proposed for inclusion this year. The town went through the process with the Regional Planning Commission. It was designated as a regional priority. Typically, that would mean it does get signed into the plan. This year, the, the DOT did not include any of the newly recommended projects, even if they were recommended by the Regional Planning Commission. So I would say in an ordinary year, it would have been included, but it, DOT didn't take any of the new ones this year. So North Main did not get into the plan.
Thank you.
And Joseph, can I ask, I, I recall you mentioned at one point that there was some guidance on on why these cuts are being made and, and prioritization for reductions. Is, is that published anywhere that is available to the public?
It is, so I would recommend to the public, on the New Hampshire DOT 10-year transportation plan webpage, they do have a dedicated page to that. There are two key documents really to look at. The first one is titled something like DOT Capital Project Recommendations. That's a list of which projects are staying on the plan, which are staying on the plan but getting delayed, and which are being cut. And that does include some reference to the, the factors that DOT took into consideration. But broadly speaking, that's more how they ranked which projects to cut. As far as broader conditions, there is a presentation, the Gassit hearing presentation, which outlines some of the, the bigger picture things that they were considering when drawing up the plan, including, you know, changes in, you know, revenue, inflation, the turnpike funding being a part of it too, and reallocating some other funds from, you know, what might have traditionally gone to this towards other areas. So there's, there are a lot of things. I would say definitely look at that presentation, and DOT does deliver this at the hearings as well.
Considering the impact to this town, I'm curious, would it make sense for a representative of the town to reach out to our executive counselor and invite her to the hearing?
I believe she will attend.
Great.
So typically, the, the counselor for the area would.
Is invited. Good, great. Okay, thank you.
So the other thing would be the, the longer letter, which did make it into the packet, came in just in time from Stephen Kelly. And I can read it to the board if you'd like. It's, it's, you know, about a, it's about a page. Or if people wanted to, to read it over, it's, it's up to you.
Do you mind reading it for the public?
Certainly, yeah. It'd be better for people on TV than just watching me read probably silently. So it, it reads, "Dear Plymouth Planning Board Members, First, I would like to applaud the board for your continued prioritization of the Tenney Mountain Overlay District, TMod. Throughout the year, as you've navigated many other critical matters and projects, the TMod discussion has remained a top priority, and our team sincerely appreciates your continued effort as we work collaboratively to get this proposal to the voters of Plymouth. Since acquiring Tenney Mountain in 2022, I've spent millions of dollars enhancing the on-mountain infrastructure, snowmaking system, lifts and terrain to give our guests a best-in-class experience every time they visit the mountain. As we gear up for what promises to be our best season yet, we are also fully entrenched in our master planning effort, continuing to craft and develop the framework and blueprint for what I've always envisioned for Tenney Mountain, a thriving hub of economic development, housing, jobs, business, technology and community, with positive lasting effects felt throughout the region. As we continue to craft our master plan, it is critically important that we know the parameters in which we are working. My team, along with the board, along with your board, have spent countless hours reviewing, discussing and collaborating on the current TMod draft. We fully understand and respect the decision of the board to hold the TMod from advancing to town meeting earlier this year. Ensuring the best, fully vetted proposal moves forth. After what has included another year of review and discussion, we feel the existing draft is a strong document, and a public hearing should be scheduled. It is our hope that such a hearing would be scheduled to occur at your November 6th or November 20th board meeting. By ensuring the TMod receives a hearing in November, the public will be able to gauge if this proposal is certainly pending a board vote or very likely heading to town meeting in March 2026, essentially eliminating or greatly reducing the need for individuals to put forth petition warrant articles on the same topic. It is our goal, as it has been throughout, to work alongside the board and other members of the public to develop a TMod proposal that we all can be proud of. We feel this proposal has received substantial discussion and review, and it must go to voters in March. Sincerely, Stephen P. Kelly, as Chief Executive Officer, Tenney Resort and Recreation, LLC, North Country Development Group, LLC."
Thank you.
I'll just add, I, I too hope this can move forward. And I think we've had a lot of good discussions and are pretty much at a consensus with a few minor things to work out perhaps.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think, I, I wouldn't object to having a November hearing at our working meeting or, or at our, on our, on our hearing schedule. That would leave room for discussion and modification if needed.
Yeah.
I would not mind that either. I would only question, do we have barack planning plans? Or HOP that would preempt that, or is there room for both, or do we not have that?
Good question. Let me check what the.
I mean, assuming we'd even want to go there, but like.
Yep.
Just to see what the.
Our parents are going to be here during our working meeting, right? Wouldn't that be during our public hearing?
Oh, you, oh, you're, you're thinking during our business meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I mean, often we schedule for work sessions, but we could do it during a business meeting.
Depending, I mean, I think a hearing could be either, couldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the board's done both in the past, kind of depending on scheduling. There's nothing on the community engagement plan calendar for November. But I know the board talked about meeting with Judy at some point about the survey.
Yeah.
We don't have a date for that yet. But there's no specific item scheduled in November that I see on the calendar.
And to answer, ask, answer the other question, do we, I mean, we don't know what's going to hap- happen in the next couple of weeks, I guess. Do we have applications coming in at this point? For like a business meeting, I mean.
We don't have anything at this time.
It could come in.
They have still until.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, it, it's a little ways out still that, the deadline, but not too far out. I can, I can give you that information too.
We'd probably take it up at our next meeting, couldn't we?
Let's see, yeah. So the November 20th meeting has a deadline of October 30th. So there is still two weeks basically for someone to submit an application. But we don't have anything at this time.
Personally, I'd be okay with that, but I don't know how anyone else is.
So I'm looking at the amendments, zoning amendments by state law, right?
Yeah.
So we're going to be discussing those tonight and potentially putting those forward. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but potentially put those forward in this, early December, till they get started earlier.
Yep.
On public hearings.
Question that. I think we normally do December and January, don't we? I think.
Yeah, I, I think we can.
I think it's December and January usually at, at our work sessions, I thought. Anyway, whatever.
So yeah, so it, I guess it doesn't matter about the exact date, but the question was sort of that arose was, because the question was, do we also put this at the beginning of November?
Yeah.
The state laws. Is there anything in the community where someone's like, hey, that went to first public hearing, you guys usually don't start hearings till December? And not saying we don't notice, like, we notice properly.
It's a window.
What's that?
It's a window, and, and it, there's a window for hearings, and it back, back calculates from the date of, of town meeting. So, you know, the, the final date for hearings is usually early February.
And that's exactly what I'm saying, is that there's a window for hearings. And we don't want them to go too late where we're like up against the end, right? Just food for thought.
Yeah, no, it happening over the holidays is also always really tricky, I feel, because everyone's in holiday mode, including myself. And I mean, I, I think we've done really, really good work on it, and I, I think that we could put it to public hearing. Can we have multiple public hearings?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. We often have two by default, but we can do.
I think you're required to have two. You can have, um, last year we had three because we made changes and had.
I don't, I guess I don't see any harm in starting a bit earlier, and, and if we're definitely going to have at least two public hearings. I think getting the word out and really having people be able to have time to think about it is, is a good call. And I would really love to hear more from the public about this document. I'd really like us to be able to do a really good job of making sure that we explain it really clearly, because it is, you know, we've been studying it for a long time, so we understand it pretty well.
Like to make a motion?
Would I like to make a motion? I want to continue discussing. So what do you guys think? Okay.
And I'll just answer the question about the, the two hearings. Often we have done two hearings, whether there are changes or not. Under statute, you have to have one hearing on the final form, essentially, that's going to town meeting.
Right.
So if you hold one hearing and you make
Changes.
any substantive changes to the document, you need to hold a second hearing. If you don't make any changes at the first hearing, technically you don't have to, but you still could as a, as a just way to get more input.
That makes sense.
And we've usually done that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of the points of having a public hearing.
I mean, starting earlier does give the opportunity, if there are complicated questions that arise, to
Yeah.
to answer them more fully.
That's what I'm thinking of. That's what I'm thinking of. I think we're prepared. Yeah.
Well, the other thing I would like to suggest is that if, if you know, if Tenney Mountain has any specific interest, you know, it'd be nice to get their requests in writing in advance of the hearing too. I mean, otherwise, I mean, you know, if we have a hearing, it's possible they're going to come to us and, you know, I think, you know, a lot of our discussion happened last year in, in hearing forum, and
Yeah.
that might happen again, but we could handle.
Although, the letter says, if we're to believe the letter, that they're pretty happy with the way it's looking right now.
Right.
And I hope we could take that word.
Okay. Yeah, well, we should move forward with that assumption then.
I mean, there were some things that they requested that we didn't abide by, and I thi- I think we had a good discussion about those and decided not to for a reason. Because they weren't reasonable.
I think we were flexible. We made some accommodations to their request, but.
But they were talking about, like, vastly reducing the minimum size and other things. No.
Right.
Yeah.
And.
Did not see it as in the interest of the town. Right.
I don't know, I don't think it's appropriate to vote tonight on whether or not to move it forward to public hearing.
Let's put it on the agenda for next, next.
With it not being on the agenda. And that's the only, I'm like, is this doing, I don't, I don't know, I just, yeah. By all means, if there's a motion, certainly, there's a motion button. I'm wondering, like.
Don't, don't we have a spot on our agenda tonight to talk about zoning amendments?
We do, yep. So we do have the zoning amendments listed out for, we do, related to the state changes and master plan stuff, and that's. and master plan stuff, and that's the thing, I don't know.
Let's come back to it later.
Yeah, I'm fine coming back to it later.
We certainly have other business to do now. We can revisit this again if we have time.
We can move it to item number, agenda number seven. All right, that works. Any other comments right now, Joseph or yourself?
Nope, those are all the communications I have at this time.
All right, perfect. Can you move us on to applications tonight?
Yes.
Please.
So we do have a request for a one-year extension of the two-year timeframe to begin active and substantial development from Horizons Engineering on behalf of Slater Holdings LLC. If anyone does not remember, in 2023, November of 2023, the board approved a self-storage facility on this property off from Fairgrounds Road. It's, you know, it's included in the packet. There was a boundary line adjustment that accompanied it, and I did also include a copy, I believe, of that site plan. Yeah, four storage buildings, a small office, parking facility and gravel drive. There were several, there were three conditions. The applicant has provided a letter outlining that they have complied with the conditions of approval. So they did meet their, their one-year timeframe to begin, to meet the conditions, but we have two timeframes that, that fall on each approval, a one-year to begin to meet your conditions, and two years to begin active and substantial development. And they're asking for a 12-month extension of that two-year timeframe to begin active and substantial development. And it looks like the applicant does have a representative here tonight as well.
Can I ask a clarification question first?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, sorry.
So the state law change, when does that go into effect and does it affect backward applications that have already been approved?
Good question, and the answer is, it is in effect, and yes, it does. It is not clear to me that that necessarily impacts this particular application because that deals with vesting. So what that statute says is, if you begin active and substantial development within three years, and you get substantially complete within seven years, you are vested against changes in site plan and zoning. So we do match that timeframe in our site plan regs, and I think it's best practice for our timeframe to begin active and substantial to match that state timeframe. But we, my understanding, and unless the applicant feels differently, is that it doesn't necessarily change the provision of this approval. Though, we'd be happy to discuss that further if anybody--
Can I ask, not because I do or don't want to like say no to this, because I'm curious.
Welcome, Will Davis. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I'm here.
And, I don't even know, Joseph, where should we go with this right now? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there's not a specific requirement to hold a public hearing on this type of request for an extension. For the one-year timeframe to meet conditions to be extended, there is a public hearing requirement, and there's not one to extend at the two years to begin active and substantial development. Perhaps something if the board wants to harmonize those in some way, at some point, if we're looking at site plan review again, we can think about that. But at this time, basically, the board can review this request, ask any questions about the request, and then it would just be a motion and a vote. I mean, the board could take public comment if there are any, though it's not a noticed hearing. And then it would just take a motion second and a vote from the board to grant the extension request for 12 months. So that would go to, that would allow them to begin active and substantial development anytime before November 16th of 2026.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions or concerns regarding this extension request?
I have one comment, which is, I find the, like, application itself to have self-storage in this location where we have water and sewer hookups and all this, where we could have more housing, and near housing, to be unfortunate. That being said, there's nothing about this request that seems unreasonable and, like, I'd have any real reason to stop it, from saying, from us saying yes.
Would the representative like to say anything regarding this? I'm curious.
Yeah, so, I'm Will Davis with Horizons. I'm here with Colby Holmes with Slater. I mean, there's not a lot to say, other than, you know, like, Joseph gave a pretty good summary. We've, we've met the conditions of approval, and, you know, Slater just wasn't quite ready to move into construction yet, and is just requesting some additional time to get, get those ducks in a row, and, you know, still intends to do the project. And, Colby, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I'll provide clarity, guys. It was financing with the tax bill. We're waiting for tax implications and the cash flow, mostly for the administration, and we feel very confident now that we're ready to move forward. This is mostly on the timing, tied up for cash flow and utilization of it. So that's kind of with the one extension there. We got everything lined up, and we, we obviously need to get some things in line now, but now that we know, some good insight, we're getting ready to actually start development.
Great, thank you.
Great.
I feel comfortable with this.
I wish I was up there with you guys. Sorry, I couldn't make it. I'd much rather be in New Hampshire than Connecticut, or, or, we just, it's more business work, but thank you, guys, for your time. And any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this? I had them on the agenda tonight. Perfect.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have to say that I also think that it's a, a little bit of a missed opportunity when we have infrastructure built out there, but there's, you know, nothing on the books that says we shouldn't grant this, you know, so.
No, it was approved once, and we went through all this before, and yes, it is an opportunity for housing, but nobody stepped up to the plate. So here it is, and I think it's worth something to come up with.
The only thing I can say is, is if we had substantially changed our zoning to not allow this, I think we would be on good grounds to say, hey, it hasn't been built, this is, and we could not move forward, but considering that we really haven't made any substantial changes to zoning that would not allow this to move forward, at this point, if we got a new application, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't offer the continued--
I don't know if that's technically true.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I was, that's what I was looking about.
We re-regulated warehouses and storage facilities.
Storage, right, but has it--
In the axon.
Did we do anything in the way, that's a good question. So if, if a new application for this were to come to us today, would we, would we be looking at it with a different lens?
We would, but I think that it was passed when that, when that was not true, so--
But that's the reason that we have a two-year timeframe for--
Right.
To start construction. So this, this is, there is an opportunity for the board to say, we want a new, you know, you know, I'm not advocating for this, but we should discuss whether or not, you know, this is the point at which we could say, no, this is not something we want to move forward with. At this point, you had your opportunity and you didn't take it. If you want to come back with another application in conformance with our new regulations--
Take a special exception.
Yeah.
I don't feel that's prudent tonight, but I do think it's a good option.
All right, that's fine.
Can I make a motion? We grant the requested extension.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight, and we hope to see progress.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joseph, any informational and pre-application reviews tonight?
Nobody has approached me about one, and we don't appear to have anybody left on Zoom, so unless there's anybody in the audience, I, I'm not aware of anything for this.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, our agenda. We'll start off with revisiting Master Plan Housing Chapter project with a conversation. This, and Joseph, please help me out here, but this sort of recaps Judy's PowerPoint and the questions she had for us, and sort of the thought and premise behind this is that these questions, we can possibly discuss a little further tonight to get some more directive back to her regarding her last visit with us.
Yeah, and the, the slides are also included in here, so, you know, if there are any questions about that as well, you know, the slideshow that she gave and some of the questions are also in the packet.
Is everyone able to review the questions? I can start off with the first one, if you'd like to discuss that.
Please go for it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
First question, what questions do people in Plymouth ask about housing? Very broad question, but--
Why is it so expensive?
That's part of the big one, right?
Yeah.
Just to state the obvious.
I just wanted to make sure we get it back to Judy with this. These are sort of the answers we came up with.
Why are my taxes so high?
Yeah, I think it's why is, you know, why is it expensive to live here? Why are my taxes so high? Why can't I, why can't I afford to live here?
Mm-hmm.
I have had a few people ask me, and this is obviously not like a scientific sample or anything, but I've had a few people ask me, like, why can't I get an affordable apartment From people who work there and say, I just can't, like, afford to live here. I can't afford to buy a house, and I, I want to rent, and I speak really hard. Which is also why it's housing's so expensive, but kind of different twist.
Rolls up to it, but just a little different perspective.
I don't have anything particularly to add to that.
Okay.
Yeah. Obviously, the, the property taxes are a big piece of the dialogue.
That's huge, that, and why, why do we have so much nonprofit? That's, those are the two really kickers.
Oh, is that why we're what?
Nonprofits.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Which is part of the conversation, although not one that a housing study can really, or how they can really answer.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah.
It affects how taxes get paid, but--
Yeah.
We, you know, real estate is available in the open market, and anybody can buy it.
Mm-hmm. What are Plymouth's best opportunity areas for housing? We sort of discussed this in the past over the first phase of the housing HOP grant, and I think one of the consensus, it's sort of like an easy consensus to get to, and I don't even necessarily think, don't know if it's the right one as far as geography goes, but one of the easier ones to get to is wherever we have, you know, water and sewer. You know, that's a pretty straightforward one.
Which at this point is mostly Fairgrounds Road, right?
Mostly Fairgrounds, and there's, there's the, the ICD, which we aren't very, like, friendly about housing in. And we do have infrastructure there, at least on one side of the road, or however that works.
We have to allow housing in the--
No, because it's commercial industrial, and the industrial part means we don't have to, because they're potentially conflicting uses.
Okay.
Where if it was just commercial, then we have to.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But highway commercial is impacted by that--
That's so interesting, so--
--change, because it doesn't allow industrial.
Right.
Those two areas, Tenny Mountain Highway and Fairgrounds Road, have got your major north-south access and east-west access on each end. You know, just, that's the logical area for housing. It's got the infrastructure--
Mm-hmm.
State roads. It's just--
Yeah.
Anything else than that.
I would add about Tenny Mountain Highway, uh, Tenny Mountain, Fairgrounds Road, the money was paid to build that infrastructure with the anticipation of, like, using it. And I really think it would benefit us to make the most of that investment and promote more infill in that area. Otherwise, like, why did we even make that investment in the first place?
Well, it's just there's large landhold, and the holders out at that other end, and you can't make them sell their land or put housing in. So it's, it's just hopefully, you know, they're going to hold on to it for the farming purposes that they're using it for, but the future, down the road, 20 years, you don't know what's going to happen.
And we are seeing lots of housing going in right now, even. And there's, could be more opportunities. Like, we are seeing the Crescent Street and the new thing we just approved last year, and there are still places to do more infill, even beyond some of those other larger parcels.
So when you say further down, where are you imagining what's further down on Fairgrounds Road? Like, the, towards Longview?
On the east-west end.
Okay. The Bachelorette and Perkins.
All of which is--
Really where the, from where the chainsaw, well, the--
Yeah, yeah, I know, sure.
From that point down.
Yeah.
But all of which is like--
A lot of opportunity.
That's true, you're right, yeah.
That's also the area that's beyond the infrastructure.
Yeah, it is beyond the--
And beyond our, at least what we have currently as our--
Overland. Because the infrastructure really stops at Beach Hill Road, right?
Goes a little bit further, I think.
A little bit further.
Towards the machine shop.
Yeah, it ends down there.
Right about there.
Before the dip of the road.
Up for the last manhole, and it's, it's actually right around the chainsaw shop.
Okay, oh, oh, passing the clouds.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of mountainous area there. There's not, I mean, it's just, when you go on to the other side--
Yeah.
Over towards the, the backside of the Walmart, that whole area back there, it's ledgy, it's mountainous, there's a lot. It's just not as conducive to housing.
Yeah.
The type of housing that you're referring to.
Right, right.
I think a good choice was made to put that infrastructure in.
Right.
I think now it's our opportunity to make the best use of it.
Do we need any answer beyond that at the moment? If that's like our main answer?
I don't think so.
No, it's just, I think these questions, when Judy brought them up the other day, we all just were kind of like, wow.
Oh, yeah.
So I, you know--
Yeah. No, you're right. Letting them stew for a little bit is smart.
There's, I think there's a lot of potential for development, like, off of Cooksville There's, there's some undeveloped farmland in that area with elevation that--
Off of Fairgrounds Road.
That was an area that the town looked at maybe 50 years ago for an industrial park, actually.
Right.
The industrial park study.
Right.
Never came to be by person. Was identified at that time as potentially suitable for development.
Mm-hmm.
What happened to our chair?
Let's see.
Vice chair.
What housing policy should the town change, if any, and why?
What are our housing policies right now? Is my main question. I mean, I think of--
Units per acre and--
That kind of stuff. Okay, so that's the six, the six unit--
Number of units, you know, you--
Six unit question.
Six per building.
Thank you.
I guess what I'm most curious about, which was like a loose end the last time we went through this, and we had a lot of mixed opinions and information on this board and in the community, was, you know, when we asked in the survey about six units, everybody said, like, for the most part, like, not really.
Not really what?
And then we did, like, to go in more than six units.
Is a no.
Yeah, and then we did the visual preferences, and all of a sudden, like, the character issue came up, which is like one of those really nebulous issues that's hard to define, but like, it clearly mattered to people what it looked like. And so, like, in those conversations, it was really like, well, six units or not? We weren't really talking about units, but like, in terms of what actually we were looking at, it was more like, well, it depends, like, on like what these things look like. And I wonder if we can, I'm not sure they answered that question or not, but it's kind of, kind of, it could result in changing policies. But it's, it's a question that was still kind of dangling at the end of the last, HOP one, like, how do we feel about larger buildings? Our gut reaction in many cases in the community is to say, no.
Is it because--
And then yet, we looked at these, like, examples, and we said, well, it's actually really nice, and it's like, you know, 30 units. This one was like 20 units, and we hated it, and--
Yeah. I think so the, I think that the, it seems to me, the way I interpret the attachment to six units is a control of density primarily, right?
In, in technical ways, yes. I think it's also a character issue there where you say like 12 units and people have a picture in their head of what that looks like.
Right, that could be.
And that picture is often something you don't want in your town because of like character issues.
I see.
Where that same 12 units could look very different, depending on if you have design guidelines or what kind of review process, architectural review process you might have or whatever. And I don't know what the answer is there, but it seemed like we kept coming back to that unresolved on this board and in our public engagement.
I don't think we've really heard any members of the public strongly advocating for larger, you know, larger units, more, more, more units in a building, but.
I guess I was just looking at our engagement work.
I think that's our, that's our role as a board, like, is that something, you know, do, are we not hearing from the public because the individuals who would be served by those are not here at this point? You know, there aren't developers in town that would want to, you know, those might be regional developers who would build that type of housing, but you know, it's, it's not an easy discussion to understand, you know, the interested parties, I guess.
Well, I guess it was interesting, we did the provisional preferences survey at one of our engagement sessions. And it's probably the closest we got to like delving into that. And it was not as many people as like answered our survey, for example, but the answers we got were quite diverse and interesting. And didn't really match unit number so much as building type.
Well, I think really the people that wanted bigger buildings were developers. The people that liked the size of the buildings as they were are current residents.
Is that data recorded somewhere?
I think Judy has it, actually.
Because I remember that session.
Judy like met with people and said, oh, these people want bigger units. Well, they're the developers.
I think that's a separate, I think those are two separate moments in the engagement process. There were the interviews that happened.
Yeah, the interviews was one.
And the developers certainly read.
You're talking about this process right here? Where like, you weren't putting like things on the maps?
Well, there were, there were the interviews that happened, like before any of that. Where she was at the library for the day or two days or whatever, week, whatever it was, calling people in, having interviews. And most developers will tell you, like, it's just not going to pencil out to do like smaller buildings and, and it's going to go to the town.
Yeah, but no one disputes that, but the developers are the one that want the bigger buildings.
But then we did the public engagement session, this one here, on the cover there, where we had all the different pictures on the wall. And in that case, it wasn't just developers saying that they wanted different sized buildings. It was members of the public saying, not we want bigger buildings, but in fact, like, one that looked like this, we're actually kind of happy with, even though it was bigger. And then there were some cases, even smaller ones, you're like, no, we don't even want to see that. And I think that was really interesting feedback and it really speaks to what we do hear in our public hearings and such about people talking about character. I'm really concerned about what the, what the character of the town is, which is this like nebulous turn, term that like planners like hate to hear, like it means nothing in some ways, but it does mean something to people.
Yeah.
People have a vision.
And I thought that was a really interesting, like, engagement strategy we had. That led to some information that we didn't quite know what to do with. And I wonder if we could, and I'm not saying we should, but I wonder if we could entertain larger buildings if we had design guidelines and architectural review process or whatever it might be that said, you know, we don't want this because we all hate it. But we might be willing to accept this.
Yeah.
Which a developer might be willing to produce because it actually like works economically.
I'm trying, I'm trying, did we, since I was part of that particular study, not as a planning board member, as a member of the public. I'm trying to remember if there was a record of who was member of the public versus developer. And, and I, like, what were, are there pictures of those, you know, boards with all of those examples with the?
We have pictures of those boards with the sticky dots on it.
I'd like to look at those.
And I also think, I mean, the reason she's asking the question perhaps, maybe we can do more to kind of tease out some of those answers. To see if we really are like willing to accept something different or if we're, we are where we are and that's just where the story ends. And who knows? But it might be interesting, if we are doing some more engagement, to tease that out a little bit more so we can actually really know what that means.
Yeah.
And maybe it means we are at six and that's fine.
Yeah.
But maybe it means we're not and.
Maybe we find it's something else, actually.
Yeah.
And Judy made a good point too, that it could be density on the lot. Maybe you could put more on the lot.
Like a few sixes.
That's right.
Plymouth Woods, right? There's four, I think four sixes there.
Is that on Fairgrounds?
It's on Fairgrounds, right?
Yeah, okay.
I think, I'm not sure, but multiple buildings, yeah.
I, I think there's multiple ways to look at it.
There is, yeah.
And that's, but we keep, it seems to get hung up on that, that board view and, and the comments on that. And I think we need to maybe look at the density. I think the six unit thing, somehow if we can get that involved in the survey, I think would be very helpful to find out where people are a year, two, two years later.
Yeah.
I have a question about the whole unit thing as well. Because a unit doesn't necessarily specifically delineate number of bedrooms and therefore number of people, right? It's just any unit of any size.
Yeah.
So you could theoretically have a six unit building and each unit has six bedrooms. In theory, I know that's unlikely.
It's not pushing up against some other zoning, potentially, but I don't know one way or the other.
Right, in terms of all the other kinds of dimensional.
They could be attached townhouses with, you know, with condo ownership and, you know, larger attached.
I guess I just don't fully understand what the, what the unit, what, what number of units is really trying to do then? If you, if like there's no other kind of discussion about scale of unit, number of bedrooms, that kind of stuff. I don't fully understand it.
I believe there are building code issues too, like once you get over four units per building.
Right.
I think it's over four units per building.
I, I think we, we can't forget about economy of scale as well, right?
True.
If you want affordable housing, you have to have the density built in for the, to support the infrastructure and cost associated with it.
Also, let me be clear, I don't think I'd want to live in a unit with six bedrooms, but, you know, just. It's a thought exercise for me to help, to help me understand it.
You stuffed animals going this one. It sounds like this could use some further exploration. And just to kind of tease out if this really means anything, because this has gone back and forth several times now in the last couple of years.
It just never goes away.
And it may still never go away, but it seems like there's more to learn.
Yeah. I certainly feel, I certainly feel there's more to learn for myself.
Well, thanks for taking on that question. Doubt for a second?
You're welcome, Matt.
Couldn't stay on there the whole time.
Anytime.
The final question Judy asked of us is, what do, what do we wish we knew about housing in Plymouth? What do you wish you knew about housing in Plymouth?
Is it housing or manufacturing that we need? What, what do people, what do people want to see? What do you wish you knew about housing in Plymouth?
I kind of wish I knew, and we teased this out a little bit in the first hop, I think, but not, I'm not sure how specific we can, can be. But I kind of wish I knew that if supply and price wasn't an issue, who would want to live here that's not currently living here because they're part of our workforce, because they want to join the community? And I know this is kind of like wishful thinking to think we can answer that question, but it does certainly cross my mind sometimes to think like, who that lives here in a low pay, works here in a low paying job would want to live here? Or who that didn't even think about living here for cost reasons, for example. But otherwise would want to be here, is not being served by our current housing models.
That's an interesting question. Remove all the financials from it, build in everything else and who would still want to be here and not be here?
Yeah, and, I mean, we're not going to find out the answer probably, but like.
Yeah.
It makes me wonder, like, who are we excluding from our community with our current housing model?
So I have an observation that might lead to a question, which is that we're in an area that's rural enough that it's almost impossible to live here without a vehicle, even if you were in Plymouth. We have, I will say, there are a few people, there are a few exceptions who live in Plymouth. Without a vehicle and we see them walking.
Yeah.
But the majority of people are going to live, that, that are going to live in Plymouth are going to require a vehicle for some reason. So my question, I guess the question becomes, to what extent would additional affordable housing in Plymouth create opportunities that's not already present by more affordable housing options in surrounding communities that are an easy commute for someone with a car? So I, I can see how affordable housing might be really important in a bigger city that's walkable, where you might be able to exist there without a vehicle. But I'm going to presume that anybody living in Plymouth is going to need a car. And once you have a car in this community, why are you not commuting to, you know, is, is it, is it, is, is there housing in Ashland? Is there housing in Holderness? Is there housing in Rundy?
The Tricia or Towns.
Are there, are there commuting, are there budding home, budding communities with affordable housing options that would serve that population? And, and does our, would, would us changing our zoning to allow more affordable housing, would it just create an unnecessary spot in the market or would it meet an unmet need that exists for people who really want to be in Plymouth?
Can I tell a personal anecdotal story?
So that, that was, that was a lot of, yeah, I'm happy to hear your question, but I, I understand that was a complicated series of thoughts and questions.
Well, that's a good.
No, and that's exactly where I was coming from. Is it really that that we need in Plymouth?
Right.
That's, that was my question.
If I can tell a personal anecdote, I moved to Plymouth to work at the university. And worked there for almost 10 years. And I specifically chose to live in a house where I could walk to work. And I wouldn't be in my car every day. I would be in my car every few days to like run some errands or something. Otherwise, I wouldn't have to get in my car. I could leave it in the driveway and walk to work and buy a few things downtown and it's really nice. At this point, of course, I took a job where I have to drive to work now, but I really appreciated that lifestyle and my ability to be able to live so close to where I work, where, yes, I still had to own a car for like, because I had to own a car just to do the bigger stuff. But on a daily basis, I didn't need it and it was really kind of nice. And it's, that's my own personal story and other people may have different stories, but I know I've talked to other people who have said similar things, who live close to me, like in that area, like work at the hospital or work, you know, at the university or wherever, and they appreciate that ability to walk.
I do, but I think there's no fallacy when someone comes to Plymouth that Plymouth isn't designed as a, I wish we had Frank here tonight because he'd make sure to inform us that we have every form of public transportation, one way or the other, as listed by the N C I C.
Technically, kind of.
Technically, right, but I, I think I do appreciate that, but there's no fallacy where someone said, man, I came to Plymouth and you know that buses don't run as much as I thought they did? Or the sidewalks don't exist like I thought they should? It's frustrating to hear, because I do hear it sometimes, that, um, you know, Plymouth really needs more sidewalks out Tenny Mountain. I'm not saying we do or we don't, I'm just saying, but there was no, when you chose to live in this community, there's no expectation that that was going to happen. So sometimes I don't know what to say to people when they say, I wish I could ride my bike down, it's, well, it wasn't designed for that, nor was there an expectation that that was going to be given once you came to town. It's a, but I do get it because it's.
I had a lot of Plymouth designed before automobiles existed.
Yeah.
I, I will say that after having living, after having lived in more, in newer cities with more pedestrian and bicycle friendly infrastructure, it's really nice to live in those types of cities, you know, I, for the three years I lived in Oregon, I parked my car and rode my bike almost everywhere. Rode my bike to work, rode my bike to school and, and I really enjoyed it. It's unfortunate that we don't have that accommodation here, but at the same time, the history of development where our roads are narrow, just doesn't, you know, it's not a reality that we're going to be able to retrofit that type of width to accommodate those to our existing roadways. And, and, you know, it, it's part of the character of, of the community we live in, but at the same time, in general, I will say that if I'm on a bicycle, drivers are pretty good about giving me space.
That's good.
There, there are, there are always a few. Yeah, lies.
Right.
There are always a few people that, that almost target violence towards cyclists that it's an issue.
I would agree with that. I'd agree with that. I've lived in, I've lived in like one of the most bike friendly places probably in the whole country and also a modern city that has a lot of bike lanes that was not bike friendly. And even when you have bike lanes, if the culture is not there, you don't feel safe.
True.
I will say that, I think part of what makes the kind of village core attractive to people is that it was in fact designed before automobiles.
I have to say something too.
And it's, it's dense and walkable because of that.
Yeah.
Because people had to walk or like, maybe it takes you to take a horse or something, but like, it was designed to be walkable.
A majority of my childhood in this town was spent biking and walking everywhere I needed to go. And I do think that that's actually very important if you want to have a town that feels thriving and has young people part of it and is active and has a vibrance to it. So I don't think that we should downplay the value of being able to walk from your house or ride your bike from your house. Just want to say that.
No, and, and I, I hope nobody interprets my comment as, as downplaying the value of being able to do that. I just think that it's, it's really hard. My assumption is that nobody's going to live here, even if it's a walkable community and it's welcoming and you can ride your bike or walk. I don't think anybody who's going to live here is going to live here without a car.
I do know people living here without cars.
Okay, but it's rare.
It's definitely not the most common, but there are people who are doing that, so.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't think, I can't see there being a big quantity of them like that, I mean.
I don't think it's the majority of people, that's pretty clear.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably a few, but I think it'd be.
The only reason I brought it up is really because like, once, once you have a car, it really opens up, like, it makes affordable housing a regional issue, not a Plymouth issue.
I know some of it does.
I think that's fair.
Can I, can I name a demographic besides like kids that don't have a car? Lots of older people do not have cars anymore.
That's true.
They don't, but they have.
And, and there's, and our state is the second oldest population in the country. Including in this town, we, we fit that demographic. And there are more and more people aging in our communities. And as they get older, they are less and less reliant on cars, often for very practical reasons.
These people, not so they're going to drive still, I mean.
And I think that's part of it too.
And so it's a question of how do we serve that community as well? In a way that make them feel welcome and able to still be part of the community and not just shut into their houses.
Maybe you should have public transportation.
Did anybody look at any of the six word story responses?
I haven't seen them yet.
I just looked at them at Joseph's desk.
Oh, well, I've not, no.
I will make an observation that as, as, as a child, a parent who, parents who are aging and, and, you know, considering reductions in their driving capacity, like, once somebody gives up their ability to drive, they're probably not in a condition to walk either.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, mo- most people are holding on to their ability to drive well after they can walk the distance that you would want them to, to go, so, you know, it's. But, I mean, it does raise the question of should there be more accommodation in pu- in the public transport realm for people who choose to age in place in their homes? I, I think that's why we have Transport Central and services like that picking up.
I mean, my, my son went to Plymouth State and when he was there, he, one thing he was really floored by was the amount of people in the, and that's just kind of from college kids, that drove from class to class and was like, couldn't believe, they couldn't walk from the fuel house into town. And he goes, just was, I mean, he had a vehicle, he had a car and he watched and he goes, I can't believe people are driving. These kids are just, he goes, it just, it made him, it irritated him.
I've watched kids get in their car, drive to a parking lot, walk to the classroom from that parking lot. And that walk to the classroom from their parking lot was actually further than the walk to the classroom from their home.
Oh, yeah.
And yes, this happens.
I know, it does happen, I know, but that brings me back to the, yeah, the people, I think, but my public transportation might not be a bad thing to look at at some point, of some type, you know? And now they have, what is it, if you need to ride someplace, you don't have a taxi, what's it called that you go online and find someone?
I don't think we have Uber.
Uber or Lyft, good luck, good luck in Plymouth.
They exist, but it's hard to get.
I think, I think there is.
But it's starting to come about more, I mean.
There's at least one guy who will provide service in this area.
Yeah.
We used to have a taxi service, Miguel.
We used to have a taxi service?
Yeah.
Miguel's Taxi.
Amazing.
We had a couple of them.
And they were busy.
Didn't we, there wasn't a woman, a lady?
He was the original one, other people came in, but yeah.
I, I.
Have gotten beyond the question?
Can I just, can I just reiterate something real quick? I think that it would be really, really worthwhile. I flipped really quickly through the note cards for the six word stories and they were striking. It's, I think it's worthwhile for us to look at those things.
Can we get those at some, see?
I thought she was going to provide them.
Judy's preparing.
I was just going to say, is, is that something that we could ask Judy to provide scanned images and just send them out via email so we can all review them?
Unfiltered?
Yeah, we do have them scanned.
Unfiltered, yeah.
We do have them scanned and, well, generally, I didn't, I don't have the additional, the stack that you were able to obtain, but the other ones I have been able to scan. Judy has the others. But the ones that were, that I have physically with me are scanned, so, or someone could stop by and take a look at them.
Not every single one of them are like really relevant to housing necessarily, but there still is something interesting about what people choose to respond. So.
I look forward to that.
We're cresting with no redactions.
What?
We're cresting with no redactions.
You've got me intrigued now.
I have, I have, following up on Judy's last collection of what do, what do we wish we know about housing in Plymouth? I have a follow-up question that's related to my first question of, you know, what keeps people from looking for a. I have a follow-up question that's related to my first question of, you know, what keeps people from looking for a forwarding, affordable housing in, abutting communities? My other question is, if there were more affordable housing in Plymouth, how many people who are currently living in abutting communities would choose to live in Plymouth?
I think that was kind of along the lines of my question as well, I think.
Yeah.
How many people want to be here?
I will, I will, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no.
I will reiterate my general question that I've had for many years about, you know, people who work in Plymouth and also live in Plymouth, who, I'm imagining, you know, the people who work on Main Street that aren't necessarily students. Are they able to afford their rents at the pay that the small businesses are able to pay them? There's a, there's a certain kind of connective fabric there and.
The RANS, the, the.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're a town that really loves small business, which I think we are, you know, are we able to help those small businesses afford their workers?
We can't do workforce development if we don't have housing.
Right. So I just want to know what is the balance there? Because I think we have a lot, it seems like we have a lot of numbers about homeownership and whether people, whether average families are able to buy a home in this community. And we don't really hear about renting.
We have a lot of small businesses in this town, but a lot of them do not live in this town.
The people who work there don't live in this town.
People that own the businesses even.
Oh, sure. That is true, yeah.
Actually, I, here's a, here's a question. That just flew right in my brain. One day.
Well, why are you thinking about it? I guess.
Okay, go ahead.
I, that's why I think personally myself, I mean, the, the low-income housing is not a bad thing. I think businesses are what we need to see in this town. But more, more businesses like, like, like even Hanover has the, the, um, the hospital has those small ones there, like they have, and they, Bristol was actually starting to do a lot of that. Where they've had companies come in there who are making good money, who are setting up small businesses in places. And I've known there's three or four I've heard, and I can't think of right off where they are, but people go, that's what's going in there. And that is developing them a lot of money, income. And I personally think that's something we, we should see more of. It brings more workers into this town. And it's not so much the low, I mean, the housing is not a bad thing, but you could have low-income housing in, in Runney, and, and that's not gonna. I just think, I think the small businesses would be a big help too. And I think that's one thing where we sort of gotta, I think we should focus on, and we should let, whatever it is, you know, I think.
Can I follow up on that thought?
Okay, go ahead.
No, so I have a, and maybe this is a question for Economic Development Committee to consider is, you know, more people in town would provide more demand for services. But local services that, that serve a local demand really don't add much in terms of value to the economics of the area. But if you look at a business, let's look at Bristol, as you brought up. There's Freidenberg down there. That's an international company.
What is Freidenberg?
Uh, they make automotive seals and.
Okay.
It's a manufacturing facility. It's actually a family-owned, my uncle actually works for Freidenberg in their homewares division, but it's a family-owned business. It's not corporate-owned, but they do manufacturing, small, um, but if you, like, when you cite a business that has a market that's outside of your community and you're then selling, manufacturing things, the labor that's going in there then brings in revenue from a much bigger area, that revenue goes homes within the pockets of those workers and you're adding value to the, to that local economy. Whereas, you know, the coffee shop that's, that people are shopping at, it's, it's recirculating the same money within that community.
I'll actually add to that.
Yeah.
A, you're 100% correct. And B, I think there's another part of this, which, what, what's that?
He's just was saying, yes, you are.
But B does another part of this, which is some of that recirculating money also has the added impact of creating a desirable community where people want to move.
Sure.
And want to relocate their bigger businesses, which bring in the outside money. So there is a kind of softer.
It takes both.
Economy of those insiders are good.
I have, I have heard that a lot of businesses consider moving to New Hampshire, but they, they also struggle because they're gonna bring in 100, you know, they're gonna have 100 employees in their business, and there's not sufficient housing to support those families. Like, it's a good environment, but at the same time, like, they couldn't get 100 people to move here because they wouldn't be able to find housing within, you know, the radius.
And I guess my, my, my point was that some of those businesses, some of those businesses make a choice between communities also on the ability to attract workers on the basis of housing, but also on the basis of people wanting to live in those communities.
Yeah, it's attractive.
And they're gonna move their business to a community where they can retain a workforce because it's a nice place to live. And that's where some of that recirculating money, kind of in a softer way, kind of pays off in the long run.
Sure.
What Smith did it.
My, my, my question I had earlier that I forgot was about off-campus student housing.
Okay.
Which is shrinking. And so what is the impact on our, which we talked about in the past, that the impact on our housing market of the shrinking student population and off-campus student population? But B, what do we do with all of the, this housing stock, which has now been renovated, some of it pretty extremely, and some of it less so for off-campus housing?
For students to live in.
For students to live in, where in many cases, like families, just like, they look at it like, I don't want to live there. And because of the way it's been renovated, and in certain ways, it's almost impossible to use in a non-roommate situation without like gutting the place and like redoing it. So if we are gonna start thinking about it, as we've talked about over the past few years, maybe bringing some of those former off-campus housing buildings online for other uses, what does that actually take?
So I think there's a, I think it's sort of, when we're talking about wages and housing, it's, you know, because I have heard it's like, hey, this, the only thing available to the wage that I make in my income is this, and I don't like that.
Yeah.
I don't have a good answer for that, because it's available. It's actually, you could move in the first of November. But you're right, you don't like it, and I do sympathize with that, but it does fit your criteria that you don't like it. I don't, I don't have a good answer for that.
But the don't like is not just because, I mean, from, from my experience anyway, you, you probably have more experiences in real estate. But, I mean, sometimes it seems not just like, this is below me, or this is like not good enough, but it's like, this was specifically redesigned for student life.
Well, and that's the thing, is it feels like student life.
Yeah.
But conversely, you know, it's like, oh, well, if, if it does get, say it totally got redesigned and renovated.
More money.
Back to it, doesn't feel like it, 100%, it's not gonna be $1,200 a month. It's gonna be $1,850. It's not gonna be obtainable again. Yeah.
It's, it's the question, you know, what to do with that housing stock as it goes offline, off-campus? And how do we make it affordable and yet like for a family? And it is tough economically.
I'd be curious. I think an important part of our understanding of what's happening with housing currently, and maybe, maybe this is something Judy can reach out and do a little bit of research and, or, or we could do it internally, is that, you know, there's, there's a handful of, of real estate companies that specialize in student rentals or have. I, I think it would be interesting to reach out to management companies, just with a voluntary questionnaire, to say, how many, how many buildings do you have? How many units do you have? 10 years ago, what was your, what was your population? Was it 100% students and, or, and what is that population now? Are you, are you seeing, you know, 40% occupation by students and 60% community members? Like, I would be curious to know of our existing rental housing. We're hearing about this. Like, I would like to know, you know, how that has changed and what our current makeup is.
Yeah, and how does that correlate with the, the enrollment levels of PSU?
And I'd like to hear the numbers. Not just the enrollment levels, but the fact that they, they've built more on-campus housing and changed their policy to require students to be on campus.
Sure, sure, sure.
And I'd like to hear the numbers and that, but I'd also like to hear some of the qualitative responses about what they're hearing.
Yeah.
And, and maybe give them an opportunity to, you know, if we're gonna reach out to them, to, you know, give them an opportunity to provide feedback on what they think the town should be considering when we're looking at housing needs.
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I agree with that.
You know, it seems like, you know, we're, we're having these hearings, and that's a very, very, very specific, but small pool of people we could reach out to and get a lot of information that affects a lot of the properties in town.
Yeah, I would agree. That makes a lot of sense.
Good idea.
I don't know if Judy would do that. I don't know if that's something that we could do internally, like just come up with a questionnaire, like, send out, find a forum and contact the landlords of.
And I think the questions might be slightly different, so it's definitely worth doing again, I think. But I think there were some interviews on our first round of HOP with some of those larger real estate holders for student housing and more kind of qualitative, like, you know, conversations as opposed to getting the numbers, but.
And we had a gentleman.
It certainly could be a follow-up though, yeah.
In the first, first round of HOP, we had a gentleman that sat with us.
He did.
Running one of the larger off-campus rental companies in the, yeah, yeah, and our, I don't remember specifically, he talked about his, you know, trials and tribulations quite a bit.
I suspect he would have, I, last time I talked to him, he, he knew offhand, you know, what, what those numbers were.
Yeah.
And I bet that each of those landlords would be willing to provide that in, to us if we, you know, gave them the opportunity to provide other feedback as well.
Yep.
Good.
All right. Mr. Chair, might I suggest we solicit comments from the public since we have a couple of members here?
If we are at the point where we are done with this, is everyone done with the first part of it?
Yep.
That was our last question. We'll open this up for public discussions. If anyone from the public would like to step up to the microphone and speak about the topics we just spoke about. That's what we're gonna keep it to though, is that part.
Okay. I don't know what you're talking about. Clay McCann, Plymouth.
I'll let you know.
Just curious, what's the plan to find the answer to all these questions? Because I was here at the last meeting too, and I feel like there were a number of questions. And I know Joseph is diligently writing all of these down, but I'm just curious, having observed this board a number of times, what is the methodology for answering your questions? And on what timeline is that? And how do you avoid having the same questions come up again next time?
I see you do.
This is, this is specifically, these are questions that were given to us by Judy Barrett, who is helping us.
I mean, the questions that you had on her questions.
So I, I think that part of the answer to that is doing more of the kind of public engagement that we did the first round.
Which is part of the plan with Judy.
Which is part of the plan with Judy. I think we don't have her on the hook for quite as much of that because of our own financial situation with the grant being a lot smaller.
Yeah.
So I think in part we have to build on what we did the first time, but also do some more new engagements. It might not be possible to do it as robustly, although there's also nothing stopping this board from going a little above and beyond if we want to, I suppose, with her guidance. She doesn't have to be like boots in the ground for all of it. That's our choice to make, I suppose. But I would imagine it would look a little bit like some of the first round public engagement, but not exactly the same, because that would be pointless. And.
I do have actually a follow-up question. Why did Judy ask us these questions?
She probably wants to know where to go with her work.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say.
I think, I think she's putting the feelers out. She's asking questions so we can give her more information, so that she knows how to go about doing, A, the survey. How does she go about going to the public? So we keep asking these questions and coming up with more because we're kind of hoping to develop something that we can take to the public, so we can get answers from the public.
Yeah.
We just sit here and try to turn all this stuff up, but ultimately, it's the opinions of the public that we need to get answers from to know which way to go.
Yeah.
So I think that's what we're, I think that's what Judy's trying to do, is get us thinking more, going down different avenues. Because we can spin our wheels like we have been on the six-unit thing. And we could do that for years, but I think she's trying to get us to think outside those boxes and to develop more questions.
She doesn't want to think for us and do it, and she wants to know what we want and what the people want, but she's like, she can't, it seemed like she couldn't go much farther with what she was doing. Because until she really sort of had some input of what we wanted, you know, so she, I think that's the one reason why she was asked.
So it's gonna be partially, hopefully we'll see some of these topics reflected in the survey that we're going to send out.
It just seems like there are a number of like really specific numerical things that would be helpful to actually follow up on so that you can answer some of your questions. That would also go into then picking questions on a survey. So, because I, I'm like, these are all very great questions, like, oh, yeah. I'm just gonna answer these questions. Like, where are these answers coming from? So I'm just curious if that's, if you have a plan for that.
Three more people, three more people with you next time.
Judy's kind of narrowing it down to three to five questions for the survey. So we're trying to also narrow this down so that it's not a two-page survey like it was before. People weren't answering them, because it was too long. So we're trying to narrow it down to just a few questions, so that makes it a little more difficult.
That is challenging.
Given our population, we actually had a pretty good response rate.
Yeah, I feel like we have, we have so far, like, not currently, well, in the last round, it was great.
But they're getting sick of it.
Yes.
Public is getting sick of it. They're just getting sick of not getting the answers from us. And so that's, it's just this vicious circle.
Yeah.
I also just wanted to reiterate, I mean, obviously, Ma and I are related, so we had a similar childhood, but I, I do, the places that I have lived also, I think, having bike access, walking access really does strengthen, um, I'm not sure what the word is for it. I think when you see people walking and biking in a place, it really seems like people live in the place. And it makes the population very visible. I also think it's probably better for the population's health. I think it makes it, makes you feel closer to the landscape that you live on, and therefore you pay attention to it differently. And so I, I really do think that, thinking about Plymouth, it has changed so much over the past 100 years, or longer, you know, 1786, that I think being open to it looking a different way to adapt to what it could need now, or what it might need to strengthen that sense of community is a really good perspective to take. And it might not look exactly like the design. I mean, I rode my bike down to the coffee shop the other day, and I realized there are no bike locks anywhere. I had nowhere I could park my bike down on Main Street. And I was like, wait a minute, where did the bike stands go? So even simple things like that, like I had to, I rode up to Silver Hall and I locked my bike up there. So even though to live here you need to have a car, I don't think that's a strong argument to dissuade more infrastructure for walking and biking as well.
I agree.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I leave my bike. Nobody takes it.
It must be a signpost there.
Have you ever had a bike stolen?
Yet either.
Really? Not, not in Plymouth.
Maybe a signpost is in there.
About a half.
Not some type of. What about the fence poles? Common's got its fence poles over there. How many input? You'd like to talk about that stuff at this moment, or?
I have some, I have some comments, but on other issues, so.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda to discuss potential zoning amendments related to changes in the state law. So these are potential zoning amendments that are sort of dictated to us. I think that some work was done to sort of not correct them, but mold them how we see fit, good for the town of Plymouth and still meeting the state's minimum requirements. Joseph, you want to talk about these more?
Sure, I can give a quick, a quick rundown here. So table, the, the amendment that has been drafted over the last several months, you know, a lot of discussion by the board of each state law provision that required a change to the zoning ordinance. And there were several, but as the board sort of talked about it, it became clear that the, that the board wanted it all to be one amendment. So it's one amendment that does a lot of things. So in the table of uses, it changes accessory dwelling units to permitted in the single-family residential zone, the only place they're not permitted by right today. It changes multifamily dwellings to permitted in the highway commercial zone, whereas previously they were a special exception. Then if you go through to the residential uses in the Village Commercial Zone, 304.1, there is removal of sec, a reference to section 1204.3, which, for a reason I will get to later, but we, we later delete that section. So that's just deleting a reference to it. Article two, definitions, we remove the differentiated definitions for related and unrelated families because it is no longer going to be permissible to regulate those differently. So there's just going to be one definition of family in accordance with this. Accessory dwelling unit definition is slightly tweaked to meet, to, to match what's in the actual accessory dwelling unit section. Then going down a little further to that 1204.3 that I mentioned earlier, those are the additional special exception criteria for residential uses in the Village Commercial Zone on the first floor. In addition to the standard criteria, there were four additional, which did, two of them did differentiate between related and unrelated families. Board discussed that, and it was decided that we would just take out the whole thing. The standard special exception criteria would apply. Obviously, pending that, any of these could be revisited for more nuanced discussion in the future. But at this time, the intention is to kind of keep them relatively simple to what we need to do to comply. Then getting to the parking, section 411.2, changing the parking requirements to one space per dwelling unit for residential uses, which, you know, is required now in. And then in order to correct an issue whereby in certain zones, for example, a two-family dwelling unit would need a variance to have four parking spaces under this new one-space minimum requirement, there's a proposal to adjust the maximum, to adjust the provisions for a parking facility that is more than, 25% more than what's required. To say that only applies for commercial, institutional, or industrial parking facilities over 40 spaces. So it doesn't apply to residential uses or smaller commercial uses. It really was originally adopted maybe 20 years ago with the idea that, you know, you didn't necessarily want a very large commercial building to have a parking lot double its requirement. Could be, you know, if the requirement was 500 spaces, you didn't necessarily want them to build 1,000, because of some of the impervious surface and stormwater considerations in particular. So anyway, that's kind of carved down in terms of what that applies to, to larger commercial facilities generally. Accessory dwelling units, the, the provisions there in section 416 are slightly revised by this amendment. They do allow for the, specifically allow for the accessory dwelling unit to be constructed at the same time as the principal dwelling unit. The occupancy requirement does come out, because there, that other law that, that we talked about, which deals with restricting related or unrelated families, also says, generally speaking, that we cannot restrict occupancy to the degree that we do in here. And generally, I, I believe it's, it's two people per bedroom is the maximum a town could restrict it to. Tom might know that offhand better than I do, but I believe that's what it is. And, you know, the section, part H, the parking reference is changed to simply reference the parking section, where ADUs already have a parking requirement allotted to them. So, you know, we said in there that single-family residences require two spaces, they don't anymore, therefore, we just took out that thing where it said, you know, you need one space in addition to the two spaces required. We just say, you must have a parking space, one parking space, in addition to those required for a single-family dwelling under section 411. We also have a slight tweak to the language about lot size, which says that an accessory dwelling unit should not be required to meet additional lot area requirements beyond those already provided for the principal dwelling unit, and that it shall comply with all applicable dimensional requirements, because we carved out specific dimensional requirements that we're saying it has to meet. I think it was implied that it had to meet all dimensional requirements, but we only say a few in this section. So we've changed that to say, they have to meet all applicable dimensional requirements in the underlying zoning district, and that it shall not be interpreted to disallow conversion of an existing non-conforming structure into an ADU, provided all other applicable requirements are met. Now, I'm not sure that, that is specifically something that towns have to allow now. I wouldn't say that it's clear that our previous regulations disallowed that, but now it's clear that they do, so it's, it's clear that we're, we're complying with that. And then on that same note, a potential way to clarify that as well, which is in section 405.3, which is where we directly deal with non-conforming structures. There's a provision that could be included there that says that you are allowed to change the use of a non-conforming structure, provided all other requirements applicable to the proposed use are met, which again, was not specifically stated. And theoretically, towns don't have to allow that, but for ADUs, we certainly do. And I would say, generally, it's, it's been, my understanding that the practice is to allow people to continue to use those non-conforming structures if the other provisions are met. So we're, we're saying that clearly, so if you have a shed that's only five feet off the property line, where 10 feet is required, you would be permitted to convert that into an accessory dwelling unit under this, even though it is existing non-conforming, as long as you don't make it more non-conforming, or, or.
A shed might be a stretch, but like, there might be a, a non-conforming garage, right?
Garage is probably better than a shed, as an example.
That might be converted to an ADU as well.
Yeah.
Including with an extra floor.
Right, yeah.
Which wouldn't make it non, more non-conforming, but you could have a two-story garage on a property line.
Right, you, you could add, you could add a residence over a parking space as a non-conforming, I mean, it's an enlargement of a non-conforming use, but.
Doesn't make it more non-conforming.
Right, it wouldn't.
If it went closer to the property.
Only if you went sideways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pumped it out.
If you went.
Closer to the property line.
Which is a little bit weird to think about, to have like.
You're right.
There's a lot of garages on property lines, but the state law says yes, so.
Right, there are a lot of garages.
You can enlarge it as long as you don't enlarge it closer to the property line that it's offend, that's too close to.
Right, exactly. And you can keep it the same footprint.
Right.
You can go closer if, you know, if part of it is conforming, you can expand the conforming part.
Yeah.
But you can't expand the non-conforming part closer to be more non, obviously, unless you get a variance, or a special exception for a lateral addition. But generally speaking, it's just clarifying that changing use is allowed if the structure is not conforming, if everything else is met. So if there's some other provision in there that says, you know, you need to have a certain density or something like that, it doesn't exempt you from, say, density requirements, you couldn't convert it to, you know, a, an undersized lot that has a shed too close to a setback, I, I would say, you know, you're not precluded from meeting still the density requirements of that use, or other applicable requirements. But that is kind of an interesting one to think about, because we do, one that I think is, you know, you, you could potentially handle that in a few different ways. I tried to keep it in line with what we do for our other, you know, provisions there, and, you know, in terms of making it align with that ADU law. And then that's, all those changes wrapped into one, for zoning purposes, should bring Plymouth into conformity with the, or those are the, those are the strategies that after these discussions, I've harmonized each piece that the board has talked about independently into one amendment, as the board sort of requested. But this is obviously still just a draft, so it, it is very much open to interpretation. Obviously, a lot of these are mandatory, but as we've kind of talked about throughout, there's not one way, there's option in how you comply in some cases. So it, it's still certainly something that there could be discussion about, changes to. And as with any zoning amendment, once a public hearing is scheduled, or we would typically send it to the town attorney to make sure it looks okay from a legal perspective, and then if there were any concerns, we would bring those back to the board.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
That is a lot of work.
It's great.
Letter B under the provisions, either the ADU and principal dwelling unit shall be the principal residence and legal domicile of the property.
I had my eyes on that.
Second, second.
We had a conversation about this.
We had some discussion about that, and I thought.
We didn't make any decisions.
Right, so how.
But it seems like the board was fairly leaning towards not really.
Changing it?
No, seeing the need for that.
Right, I thought we were gonna change that.
I don't really like the concept of, of allowing absentee landlords with ADUs.
So you want, you wanted to leave it?
I, I'm okay leaving it.
Can I, can I, can I ask Phil, before you ask?
Mm-hmm.
Why? And I ask why because there's no other type of residence in this town that I'm aware of, where we require the landlord in the zoning ordinance not to be an absentee landlord.
I, I think it's different because an ADU is, is kind of a special allowance that, that in my, my presumption is that it's, it's encroaching upon the, the density of the underlying zone in a way, yes, it benefits the, the landowner, but I also think there's some responsibility for the landowner to be present and aware of what's happening there.
I think you could have a duplex.
So I was just gonna say, what's the difference between that or a six-unit, you know, it's, I think that.
It, it seems unnecessary to me, and I wouldn't mind striking that out, and, or just maybe temporarily striking it out, putting it out and up for a public hearing and seeing what the public has to say about it, and we can always put it back in.
Potentially. I think we should hear from a gentleman that has to deal with the enforcement of this issue, cause that could eliminate a lot of this.
Yeah. My understanding is, it is a part of the RSA, so it is not an option for.
From the state RSA.
Correct. So it's, it's not even up to the town.
What is, what is not?
That we have to.
That the, one of the RSA requirements is that the, the, either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit be the primary residence of the, a property owner.
So we, we are not legally allowed to require that by the state statute?
No, you, you would not, it is, it is required by the state statute?
To keep that kind of thing.
To keep that. So if you were to take it out of the zoning requirement, then you would no longer be in compliance with.
The state law.
The state law.
That's so interesting.
I guess we'd have to look at that. I mean, sometimes the RSAs enable towns to require that. If, if it requires that towns do that, that's another thing.
Do you know the RSA number?
Uh, off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
But.
Six, seven, four, seventy-one.
But I've looked into this quite a bit, and I've had a lot of conversations with other code enforcement officers throughout the state, especially with the changes in the state law, and I can confirm it tomorrow, when I go back into the, or later tonight, when I have my laptop in front of me, but my understanding is that the RSA requires that one, one of the dwelling units be.
Occupied by the, by primary.
Not just occupied, but the principal residence. So, which is why we put provisions in place last year.
Just certified.
When I came in front of this board and came, and then went to the Board of Selectmen and adopted provisions where we, we now require an annual verification of that.
Yeah.
But I don't think that that is something that this board, or the town in general, has the authority to, to nullify.
That just seems so counterintuitive to the rest of the, the spirit of the state changes, I guess, so.
Do we have any further clarification on this? I'm kind of curious.
I'll find out.
I'm not seeing anything.
I'm about to say, is that, is that a thing, but is that a?
I didn't, and I'm like.
Must be something that would state that, that you could.
My computer no longer has the town of Plymouth password. What is it? 2020 or something?
Yeah. I don't have the password.
If we don't, if we don't list it, doesn't it default back to the state, I would say, anyways, like all other?
Yeah, it's not.
Provisions, if we eliminate it, the state defaults, it defaults to the state.
It does default to state.
So you're not out of compliance by not listing it.
That's a good point.
Like we just strike it from the ordinance.
Strike it, and it defaults to, right, rolls up to the state.
Yeah, that was a good point. I guess the conversation might be, we'll wait to hear an answer, but what, do you have any input? Say if that wasn't a regulation, what are your thoughts on that? Like, your, your input on that, I guess.
Hey, can you get me a planning book when we go in this year? In March?
So I did have some other, I did have some comments that I was saving for the public input session.
Okay.
Regarding.
Yeah.
Uh.
Can I ask you a read something?
ADUs, but.
I have the.
I can address this.
I have the NHMA guidance here, which is not actually the, the actual language of the law, but the NHMA guidance, New Hampshire Municipal Association, says a municipality may require that the owner demonstrate that one of the units is his or her principal place of residence. It says, it says may.
Yeah, so that says, it doesn't mean we have to, it means we could allow.
And that's, that's NHMA, it's not the actual wording of the RSA, but.
But if that's what it said, I'm, I'm trying to find the RSA language myself.
A municipality may require, this is the RSA language, a municipality may require that the owner demonstrate that one of his units, or one of, one of the units is his or her principal place of residence.
So we could.
And the municipality may establish a reasonable regulations to enforce such a requirement. It's may, it's not shall.
Yeah, so we could, we could, we could either strike this or leave it, either, in, in either one, it would be valid.
I think though, if you want to know my opinion on it, first off, I think that, I like how Joseph has compartmentalized all of the, the zoning changes that are required to get us in compliance in state law. He's compartmentalized that into one, so it's basically a housekeeping change that really isn't up for debate. So I think that any additional changes, such as what you're proposing, should be kept separate of that, because I think it should be, here's what we need to do to be in compliance with the state law, and here are some other changes.
Hmm.
It's a fair point.
That is fair point.
Yeah, but I do, I, I'm a strong advocate of accessory dwelling units, but I think that if we take away the requirement that it be a, that one of the units be the primary residence of the property owner, we're effectively opening up, opening up the entire town to be, we might as well just say, we're gonna allow two-family houses.
Everywhere.
Everywhere. And to take it one step further, cause I also, I'm the, the building inspector and code compliance offer and officer in Ashland. And in, in Ashland, they allow two-family dwellings, basically in all of their zoning districts where they allow residences. But the distinction is that I've had some people in Ashland have said, well, we want to do a, a separate dwelling unit that is not attached, and the only way to do that is as an accessory dwelling unit. So if we, we have to keep in mind that if we take away this restriction, we're not going to have just open it up to two-family houses throughout the town. We're also going to open it up that we can have detached, separate housing units throughout the town. So I, I think that, I think that in able to have some control over this, I think it's important to have this restriction, that it be the primary residence in at least one of the units.
So because ADUs are allowed in single-family, then if you allow it to be, both units to be rented by an absent landlord, then you essentially are making that a two, a two-unit?
Two dwellings.
Twelve dwelling.
Actually, no, cause they could do attached or detached, so, right, it could be.
But in single-family residential, you have two units on a lot.
Which we already have with ADUs.
Right.
It's just a matter if one of those, we all of a sudden mandate, if you don't mandate in other.
If one is rented, if, yeah.
That the owner has to live there.
Right.
And I don't see why we would mandate that when we don't mandate it, like, in other single-family homes, or.
There is.
For that matter, outside a single-family residential zone, you could do multiple houses on a single lot.
Right.
So you can just build a whole bunch of houses and, you know, have different people in every one of them.
One more question. There are also like spatial limitations to ADUs.
Yes, yes.
So it's not, so, you know, like in our village, in, you know, like the Merrill, Merrill High Street Langdon quadrant of the village, the lots are pretty narrow, pretty small, so like realistically, you wouldn't actually be able to build an ADU on many of those lots.
None of any size.
I mean, I'm not really concerned with who lives there, as long as they're not being a nuisance, which we have other laws for.
Right.
That's it.
And, and for me, the enforcement is, if you have someone who's not behaving properly by our law, that's enforceable by other means.
Yeah.
And I don't see why we have to mandate the owner living in the property when we don't for any other type of structure.
No, no, I don't think so either.
Personally, I mean, I.
I, I, yeah, I don't really see, can you expand on what you mean by enforcement of other things? You're talking about like policing of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's other things you can, if you're a nuisance on your property to your neighbors.
Yeah.
Um, there's, depending on what you're doing, of course, you can just be a nuisance in legal ways.
Right.
Noise.
Noise, right?
Noise, yes, yeah.
But if, if you're a nuisance in ways that are not considered legal.
It's typically a police call.
Then there's other forms of enforcement.
Right, okay.
And it's not necessarily like.
You could be the homeowner, you could be a nuisance, or you could be a renter, renter, you could be a nuisance.
I know plenty of homeowners who could be a nuisance.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I guess my point of thinking about the, also the like size limitations is that it's not realistic that we're going to have every single lot in the town suddenly have an ADU on it as well. Because they just simply can't be built on every single lot. Right?
Setbacks in size. I bet.
Right.
I mean.
I guess one of the questions, is it worth, since there seems to be not consensus necessarily, but a bunch of us who are interested in this, trying to move forward with this this year, potentially as separate from this because it's not necessarily.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that's important. That's a very good point.
And, or to be one of those kind of sit on it for a while.
Sort of want to get some more feedback. I like.
So we can put it up for public hearing and get feedback.
Let's put it on a public hearing and try it.
So aside from this question of Section 2B and the owner occupancy, all of these other changes that Joseph has so precisely enacted, are there, is there any reason why we shouldn't put this to public hearing for our next, in a month?
So I don't, so that's what I wanted to add. So we were sort of talking about the T mod earlier.
Yeah.
Is, we can choose to put this to public hearing, right? And set that date for the first public hearing. It doesn't necessarily need to be our next one, though.
Sure.
So, and that's why I sort of want to talk more about timing, like, and it might be moot point, it might not make a difference either. Or like, Matt, you're thinking too much into this word. It doesn't. But, so, we can make the decision tonight to move it forward and then, and pick it. It doesn't necessarily need to be the next one. But I think this is a great document that they've done amazing work on, cleaning it up, making sure that what is going to go potentially to town meeting is a good document to, you know, snap, get us in line with the state, but also keeping towns best interest involved.
I can't wait to make a video on this one. Brad.
Okay, Molly, you just behave yourself now.
I was literally imagining it as Joseph was walking through everything and I was like, oh, this is, this one's complicated. It's just long, that's all.
You guys did great with the videos last year.
Thank you.
I thought so.
Thank you.
So I can, New Hampshire Municipal Association does have some dates on their calendar. So the first day to accept petition warrant articles for zoning amendments is January 12th. The last day to accept petition for zoning amendments is February 11th. And that comes into play because the.
Seems later than last year.
No, that's, that is not what this calendar says.
That seems later than last year.
First day on this calendar.
That's interesting.
Is November 10th. Last day is December 10th, actually, only a month.
Like what I remember.
Yeah.
That's interesting. I'm on the 2026 New Hampshire Municipal Association Traditional Town Meeting Calendar schedule.
Is it for petition warrant articles versus zoning amendments? Because there are different timelines.
Yes, this is petitions zoning ordinance changes.
Those would be petition by the county.
You have the same.
We have conflicting calendars.
We do.
Fascinating. This one.
So let's put that in the background.
The one in the packet is from New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs. And it's there, every year they put out a 2026 zoning amendment calendar. But what we would really, ultimately, these calendars are advisory. We'd have to reference RSA 675:4 for the timeline.
Tell me that RSA number again.
675:4, if we're talking about petitions specifically.
Oh, is that not also all the other calendar?
The others are 675, three through seven.
Thank you. They used to have these in books, you guys.
We have books. I just wanted to have it with me. But I can get it if you folks would like to have a couple of copies on the table.
Right now, I would.
Well, they're going to be, they're going to be printing new ones in April, so we should wait.
Yeah, the question was about the petition.
We can, I don't need to know this right now, yeah.
I think there's time, either way. I do recall it was early last year.
This is, I think what you've done is great. I think this is good.
Yep.
So what is your concern, Matt? I don't fully understand about timing of things. If we were to put this to a public hearing for next, for a month from now, and on our business meeting, potentially. Is the timing off in that regard?
I don't, I don't necessarily think so. I don't have an answer one way or the other as to the time.
There's a limit on how early you can do it.
And there is, and like, so we fall within that, those, we fall within it. My question was, I don't have an answer one way or the other to it, but it's, so if, if there's, and we notice everything, right? So like, yes, we do our due diligence to tell the public that this is happening. But if people are usually expecting.
Okay.
We'll say controversial potential amendments to come forward.
Yeah.
And they're, I don't know, I don't even know, is putting it forward doing an injustice? Or does it not even matter? And I don't know either way, it's just a thought.
I can give you the flip side, which is if we put it forward a month earlier than we typically do, it can get the word out earlier.
Yeah, that's my thought.
And nothing is stopping us from having three public hearings.
Well, no, and like, in for a Tenny Mountain Overlay District, for example, right? We can potentially anticipate changes.
Right.
So then it wouldn't put us up against the timeline.
Yeah.
Like, holy smokes, we need a special meeting, just to get another hearing in.
I'm generally an advocate for, especially because we can have more public hearings. And if we want the option to have more public hearings, when we start earlier, we have more options. That's my thinking about that.
I do have an answer to your question when you folks are done.
Okay.
Ninety and 120 days is the window. So between 90 and 120 days.
So the calendar I'm looking at also says 90 and 120 days, but it clearly shows 30 and 60 days in their dates, so.
I see.
Their calendar's wrong.
So, yeah, 90 to 120 days for petitions, and then other zoning amendments do have a different time frame.
All right, thank you.
I think that's why they were asking for a November hearing, is that the window for filing petition zoning amendments is going to be sooner.
I just don't want that to be a factor in this discussion.
I think there's probably enough consensus here to move that forward, maybe with a few tweaks, without, like, having to worry about that happening. So I guess, so do we want to entertain a motion for a November hearing on this language, or a December hearing?
On those.
On this particular language that Joseph gave us for these statutory necessary changes.
I think we should do these soon.
Okay.
Like, I don't think this is going to be a big one.
I'm good with this, yeah.
I move, we have a public hearing to consider these changes as required by statute. That, I have it in my hand here. I'm failing for words.
The packet for October 16th.
In our first work session of November.
Potential zoning moments related to changes in state.
I'll second that.
And I have a point of discussion. So I just do want to make folks aware that one of the changes in that packet, and I apologize, I should have mentioned this earlier, whenever you change the use table, or minimum lot size, or boundaries of a district with 100 or fewer properties in it, you do have to send a mailed letter to everybody in that district.
Highway commercial.
And the highway commercial does fall into that, just maybe 96 properties in that district. So I would want to take a look, we could certainly get that done for the 20th. I would just need to, I couldn't, I wouldn't want to guarantee that the mailing company that we use for those notices would be able to get it out in time for the 6th, because that is a relatively short turnaround.
Let's do the 20th.
And we currently have no applications yet, but we still have a two weeks' window to get applications in still.
We do, and I would be happy to try to get that notice together for the 6th and get it out in the mail. The hard thing is it's a third-party company that does the mailings.
I think I'm comfortable with 20th. It's the 16th now.
Yeah, I think the 20th is.
I amend my motion to the 20th.
All right.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay.
That's my turn.
Right.
Also, we'll move forward to a public hearing of the potential zoning amendments related to changes in the state law at our business meeting in November, the 20th.
Do we want to consider the ADU thing or not? Or do we want to get language? Actually, there is no language. It's just striking that one.
Just striking it out.
So I think the good point would be to pull that out, well, obviously that's, it would be to pull it out potentially, and then, yeah.
We want to consider that?
That's a great question to put to voters. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So we're developing another warrant article for zoning amendments?
We have a public hearing on the proposed changes to our zoning that would remove the provision section of our ADU ordinance, letter B, on principal residence.
I have a question.
Yes.
Would we need to see some, can we just make some draft language? Yeah.
It's basically striking out the line.
Just taking it out.
Okay.
And then relettering everything else afterwards.
Additionally, do we need to have draft language to show to the public?
So we, so the.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, the draft, we do need to show the text, and if you specifically describe the text in a way such as that.
You can come up with draft language.
Well, it wouldn't really be drafting. I would just write up what John has said verbally.
A little bit more clearly.
Well, if you say, strike a particular section, that is just, you know, you're, so that is text that we would include, and I, so.
Okay, I can second that.
That would also be for the 20th, if I didn't say that the first time.
Is that right? Yeah. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right. We'll have a public hearing on that on the 20th.
Since we're going to be having public hearings, do we want to add the Tenny Mountain Overlay District to that date?
That's what I'm curious to know, too.
I would think so.
Is it, are we comfortable with the drafted language? Are we prepared to go to, or should we go to a hearing with the language we have as it stands?
Did we amend the number of square feet? I can't remember.
We did.
We added 150.
Okay.
That's the limit.
I'm comfortable with that.
I will move that we take the Tenny Mountain Overlay District to public hearing on November 20th.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Move the Tenny Mountain Overlay District to public hearing on November 20th. If there's no more further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, that's actually now a busy meeting.
It is. Hopefully we spread it out.
Can I ask a question?
No, past 10 a.m.
Please.
Or 10 a.m.s.
I'm just trying to like, keep my mind around like, all the things that we are proposing this year. Are we still considering the.
FROD?
Yes, the Fergone Road Overlay.
I think we're.
I thought we were going to kick that off for another year.
I'm not sure where we were on this.
I do believe there was some kind of, some discussion around the, there was a brief discussion of what major changes does this bring to the zoning? And it was about scale, I believe.
Right.
I don't think we actually fully decided to not address it anymore, but we became focused on other things.
If I recall correctly, some of larger developments wouldn't be particularly impacted by this.
Yes.
It would allow for more, if the opportunity arose, smaller-scale infill development of like, single-family houses and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And I think that would be the biggest impact. It's just kind of more dense, single-family infill.
Yeah.
Whereas some of the bigger stuff wouldn't probably change all that much.
Right.
I think that's what I recollect.
I think you're correct. That's.
It's not a huge change, but it could be beneficial for people who want single-family houses, kind of a little bit more close, to take advantage of our water and sewer system.
Is it something that we could bring back to the agenda for the 6th of November?
And maybe talk about in more detail?
Sure, Chair. Yeah.
I think we should, I think so.
I think that if we don't have the language in front of us tonight, it's, then.
That zone isn't so small that we would have to send out notices to, or would we?
I don't believe so. Well, if it's a particular district boundary, it would include whatever's in that district boundary that would change.
We would have to send notices to the residents of the bound, of the district.
If it's less than 100 properties that are encompassed by it, we would. And I don't recall from two years ago if there were 100.
I think, I think we actually made a choice to notice them, even though we didn't statutorily have to.
I believe you are correct.
Because we wanted to make sure everybody knew.
I do remember that.
I do remember that as well. Thank you for having a memory.
I remember that we noticed people because people I know that live there were getting the notices.
But we didn't need to. We made a choice.
All right.
Interesting.
I might have missed that, but that's fine.
I do remember that. I think that the Housing Committee ended up recommending that.
Okay.
Interesting.
We'll have that on the agenda for our work session in November.
Thank you.
All right. So we're satisfied with item number seven on our agenda tonight? Thumbs up.
Perfect.
Is there anything we're missing? I think that's it, though, right?
I think that is it, yeah, just making sure that. Okay, moving on to our item number eight on the agenda, public comments. Thank you for your patience. Please step up to the microphone.
Just for the record, Tom Newcomb, code enforcement officer, building inspector, and now floodplain administrator for the town. So a few things. Try and make this as quick as possible. Started off with two. But in terms of the change, the change that you voted to move forward with in terms of ADUs, on removing the condition of it being owner-occupied, I'm just cautioning you on, I think you should probably do some research into what the experience has been and what other communities are doing throughout the state as part of your public input on that. But also, I do think that any of these other changes should be kept separate from the changes that Joseph put forward that are statutorily required, which also, frankly, in my opinion, it should be a no-brainer because even if that were to get defeated at town meeting, they're still going to go into effect because the state law is going to override. So I don't see that as being a major issue. While we're on the subject of ADUs, I want to point out that in Section 416 of the zoning that allows ADUs, it states, "The purpose of the ordinance is to expand the mix of affordable housing opportunities." I believe the board is aware of a recent case where a property owner, back before the ADUs were a matter of right, they received a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit in their property. And they recently went to the ZBA to get it ruled as a, get a special exception as a rooming house so that they could use it as short-term rentals. In my opinion, and a lot of people's opinion that I've talked with, is contrary to the intent of, both from the state statute and the preamble to the Section 416 is in that it's to expand affordable housing opportunities. Therefore, I'm requesting that this board put forth an amendment that limits the, basically prohibits accessory dwelling units from being used for short-term housing. To use one example of language that a nearby town has, it says, "The use of an ADU shall not be deemed to include such transient occupancies as hotels, common motels, rooming houses, or boarding houses. This limit includes short-term rental of dwelling units." Be more than happy to provide that to Joseph, as well as other languages that other communities are using.
May I perhaps clarify that?
I have a question on that as well.
Yep.
In the case that you're talking about, it was actually considered no longer an ADU, if I understand it. It was a change of use.
That is incorrect. It was, because it was approved as an accessory dwelling unit, and it was not necessarily a change of use.
But if, I mean, we can approve on the planning board all sorts of uses. And then if somebody comes with a new site plan, for example, you can do a change of use. And from, I thought, maybe I'm misunderstanding, I thought that was.
Tourist home?
That it went from an ADU to a tourist home and was no longer an ADU at that point.
No, it is an ADU because it is a detached unit. And I specifically had conversations with the property owner at the time that they were applying for their permit to make it an ADU. And because it is in the agricultural district, they could have simply combined the two structures. They're about eight feet apart. And they could have done a simple connection between them and then done it as a two-family. But it is still an accessory dwelling unit that has been under the ZBA approval to allow it to be used as a, as a rooming house.
I also, I think the broader context here, I think we've, on this board, spoken about, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think, I also, I think the broader context here, I think we've on this board spoken about, correct me if I'm wrong, the fact that this round of hop that we're going through right now would include public engagement around short-term rentals, and how we felt about them, how we wanted to regulate them, because currently you're not allowed to have one anyway.
Exactly, and that's my, that's my next point.
Unless you do it as a tourist home or something, which is a separate sort of thing. And we were going to have a conversation, I think, going forward, maybe have something next year, if, depending on what we hear, about short-term rentals and how we want to regulate them, and I think it might be premature to try to put through that this year.
Well, and that was my, my second point, which is that I was here on November 7th of last year, and as I stated then, our current zoning prohibits short-term rentals.
Yep.
And that I've been asked to hold back on enforcing that, hoping that this board would take some action. And so I came to this board last November 7th, and you stated a case as to why we need to correct this, that we've had complaints because we've got the short-term rentals in a variety of different places and they're unregulated. We have no life safety regulations on them, like, just as we would a hotel. And at the time, this board was reluctant to act, you had a full plate last year. There was also concerns about a lawsuit involving the town of Conway regarding their recently enacted short-term rental regulations. However, there are many other municipalities in town, rather, in, in the state. Tilton is a perfect example that has had regulations of short-term rental properties in place for many years with, with no problems. And if this board is not willing to act to, to put something forward this year, then we're in a situation right now where the town is taking on liability because we have selective enforcement. And that cannot continue. So I implore this board to take some action this year. I've researched it extensively, be more than happy to work with Joseph to propose some language that we can put forth to town meeting. But right now, it is not an allowable use, and it puts the town in a very tenable situation because we're allowing a use that is contrary to zoning.
Right.
So that's, those are my comments.
Would you be willing to provide, do you have model language?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
He said.
I'd be curious to see some.
Yeah. There are, there are many, many examples of it that some, how they, they have a special exception from the ZBA so that therefore there is some review of it, so that depending upon the situation as to where it fits in in the neighborhood. But they also have requirements such as registration, inspections, posting of a 24-hour contact in case of emergency or other problems, as well as the towns provided with that information, what to do with rubbish disposal, limits on the, the number of occupants, for example, two people per bedroom plus two people that would be in a non-bedroom area. Requirements for egress, so fire extinguishers, things that you would require of any other short-term rental property such as a hotel. And I, I could put some language together and work with Joseph on that and have something together in a week.
I have a question about that, when we kind of paused the conversation last year, which I do remember, and it was in light of the kind of Conway legality, is there anything, like, are the results of that legal precedent, does it have any impact on the fact that we don't technically allow short-term rentals right now?
The Conway case is resolved.
Okay.
And they lost, and it had to do with some of their definitions. And so the lessons have been learned from that at this point.
Right.
I think the other reason we were pausing is because we wanted, we knew we were getting the hop round two, and we wanted to hear what the community actually wants before we make the change.
Right, so.
I understand the kind of bind that in a time schedule that puts us in, but.
Is there anything that's actually stopping enforcement of our zoning right now, besides our request?
Is there a question to the board or a question to me?
It's to the board. I mean, you could answer.
I don't know if the board.
If no one in the board knows, yeah.
What do you mean by that?
Why it's not being enforced?
I mean, we're.
Why are we not doing it?
Is there, I mean, is there anything that would prevent us from enforcing?
Now. If we, I mean.
Prohibition on, on short-term rentals.
No, and frankly, if, if this situation is not going to change, then there will be enforcement.
Right.
There you go.
It's been a courtesy.
Right, so that's, this is kind of my point, I mean, if it's.
I think this is a good question to put to the voters.
Right now?
This year.
This year?
Sure.
But I mean, but just the, I'm not saying no or yes, I am going to say, it's not a question to put to the voters, we need to figure out which question it is we want to put to the voters, because there are many ways of tackling this question.
Right.
I agree.
Can I make a suggestion?
Can I ask a question about the model language that you read?
Mm-hmm.
So it sounded like they were prohibiting short-term rentals of the accessory dwelling unit. Did those, did those prohibitions also apply to the main dwelling unit if the owner occupies the accessory? I, I could see someone building, you know, an accessory dwelling unit and using it as their, as, as the owner occupied unit and renting out the house.
Well.
The bigger house, there's nothing that, that requires that the owner occupied unit be the larger parcel. So it, it opens up much larger rentals.
Well, in terms of the rental of an accessory dwelling unit is, is if it's a, not a short-term rental, is.
I'm thinking specifically short-term, like, somebody could do, like, somebody could build an accessory dwelling unit, move into it as their primary residence, and, and do short-term rentals on, on the home which was the former primary residence.
Well, I think that, I think that, I think we first need to solve the issue of whether or not we're going to allow short-term rentals. And, and then look at the accessory dwelling units, and, and that, that's a good, a good point. It's, is the, whether or not to allow short-term rentals of the accessory dwelling unit versus the primary residence. And, you know, we have a.
And if we're going to eliminate the requirement that either unit be owner occupied, then can you do short-term rentals on both units?
Well, here's, so, my own, this is just one opinion in a town of like, several thousand. I think what Conway was going after and failed because of other reasons, I think was a good idea, which is owner occupancy. And I think in this case, owner occupancy is a good idea for short-term rentals, because like a hotel, where you have someone who's responsible for the property on premises, for a short-term rental anywhere in town, you can also have someone on premises who's responsible and keeps the short-term, like, hotel guests basically, supplied and from doing anything they shouldn't be doing. And, and they have a stake in the community. And I think that's what Conway was trying to do. That, and it didn't have to be there all the time, but you had to at least like, have a stake in the community and be there like, half a year or whatever, and I didn't write it correctly. But it seems like that puts an onus on the owner to, you know, run their hotel in a responsible way.
Be responsible for it, yeah.
Just as a hotel owner would have like, either themselves or a manager on duty to make sure everything's going right.
There are a lot of questions here, because I mean, you could have a unit that's owner, owner occupied, but it might not be their primary residence as well. Like, somebody might live in Massachusetts and keep their accessory as their vacation home, and then they rent the primary home out as a short-term rental, like, you know, there's, people are going to figure out ways to work around a lot of things. And I think that if we're going to, if our goal is to ensure affordability, which is what the introduction to our accessory dwelling unit language implies, you know, I think you make a case that short-term rentals of, is, is not, not part of that.
I don't think it's just about accessory dwelling units, though.
No, you're right.
You could be in a duplex and have half rented out, you could have a room in a house that you rent out. There are many different ways that could look that don't involve accessory dwelling units.
True, yeah.
No, and I think that they are, they're related but separate issues. And because John's right, that, that a short-term rental could be, you've got a spare bedroom.
Yeah.
In your house. So we've got, there are short-term rentals in Plymouth right now that are listed on Airbnb that are a, a tent in someone's backyard, literally. So there are, I've researched it, so.
Believe you.
Yeah, there are many different, different options. And I'm not necessarily opposed to short-term rentals, but my main concern is, I've stayed in some short-term rentals, not in Plymouth, that they, in other, in other communities, that they don't have proper life safety requirements. They don't meet DES requirements of having a septic system. So, but life safety is my primary interest in, in this. And that, that and that it fits in the neighborhood, and that we don't have neighbors that are, that have these ruckuses.
Homeless people?
No, no, not homeless people, but, you know.
People partying in short-term rentals next to, in the neighborhood where you have your own home.
Yeah, we've, there was an instance, neighborhood of million-dollar homes, where the, one of the homes is, is not owner occupied at all, it's a short-term rental, and the next door neighbor was having people just wandering into their yard. So I think that with having some regulations for, for life safety, and also looking at, does it fit the nature of the neighborhood by doing a special exception? There were also, I'm not advocating for this, but I'm going to say that there are some communities that can say you, you're going to short-term rental for X number of days out of the year. So, so that they limit it. There are quite a few properties in, in the town of Plymouth that are permanently short-term rentals. So I'm not necessarily saying that we want to regulate it and say you can only do it X number of days. I just think that for safety sake and for the community, we want to have some controls in place.
If we're going to do this, I think we're going to need to look critically at our current definition of tourist home and where those are already permitted, because they're already permitted in the Village Commercial, the Highway Commercial, the I C D, and by special exception in the Ag Zone, and by definition, a tourist home is a building or part thereof other than a motel or hotel where sleeping accommodations are provided for transient guests with or without meals, and which is also owner occupied. So I mean, that kind of meets the definition, I mean, almost anybody could say, I have a tourist home.
That, that applies to primary residence.
Owner occupied.
Owner occupied. So if there are.
Does not, I mean, it doesn't say primary residence owner occupied.
You're right.
Either. It could, it could be my second home.
And we're also in a town where primary residence is quite loose, if you look at a student, for example.
Sure, 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 sure.
You know?
Yeah.
I think one of the things that when the, the ZBA argued, debated about whether or not to give that special exception is that they felt that the whole idea of a tourist home is antiquated, and that there needs to be a better definition of it. And that a short-term rental didn't necessarily fit into that, but they felt that it was the only available kind of hole to place that in, and that, that they didn't, they, they didn't feel comfortable with the decision, but they didn't see a way to, that they could deny it.
I agree that the tourist home is antiquated, and at the same time, I think there's a lot of language in there that is useful.
Yeah.
And I, I still come back to like, the owner occupied part, or, you know, in some way or another, even if it's not like, 100% of the time, that means you're going to have to look your neighbors in the eye. And like, and they're going to look you in the eye and they're going to be pissed at you if, like, you're not a good neighbor and you don't keep your place well. As opposed to a house that's 100% a short-term rental with the, nobody ever there.
Yeah.
As the owner.
And we've had, so Plymouth has, I think, had Airbnbs for quite a while. And I hear that one example, you want a million-dollar neighborhood and be along through the yard for three years now. I hear no other examples. So I'm not saying it is not an issue, or there are life safety concerns, which I also don't know if that's the town's responsibility to be involved with the life safety concerns of an Airbnb. But I also don't hear, I think we've been fortunate so far to not have some of the issues you do hear from towns in the, in the state where it's like, hey, this has been a huge problem, and now we're not in front of it anymore.
It's an issue insofar as an Airbnb is a business.
Right.
For any short-term rental.
Yeah.
It's a business, and we do have some responsibility to make sure businesses are run safely.
The, where, where tourist homes allowed by right?
Village Commercial, Highway Commercial, I C D, and by special exception, an Ag.
Okay.
And I will just, as an additional food for thought, so the Tenny Mountain Overlay District has uses that are allowed in the district, not just in the PUD. So any property in the T mod, if it were adopted, would be allowed to have a use called bed and breakfast, which doesn't exist today, or if it does exist, is being changed by this. And that is defined as a dwelling unit in which overnight accommodations and a morning meal are provided only to guests of the facility for compensation. So that is a very, a dwelling unit, as we define it today, of course, is for non-transient occupancy purposes. This bed and breakfast use would entail taking a dwelling unit and converting it into something else that is for overnight accommodations. So just as a, another point of consideration, that that's currently in the T mod language for, not just within a PUD, but within the T mod broadly.
Bed and breakfast in our zoning ordinance.
It's being changed.
It's a definition already.
That makes sense.
A transient lodging facility that is the personal residence of its owner and is occupied by the owner at the time of the rental to a patron in which the only meal served is breakfast to in-house guests. A bed and breakfast shall have no more than four rentable rooms in the residence and have an, which I know a lot, anyway, have an area of dining capable of accommodating the number of registered guests, whose posted room rates shall include breakfast. Of course, Airbnb, for example, our biggest short-term rental agency, is called B and B Bed and Breakfast.
It's not a.
Almost, almost none of them provide breakfasts. There's a few, but almost none.
So to that point, just quickly, the bed and breakfast use in here is proposed to, that definition I read you is proposed to replace.
Okay.
That definition.
Got it.
As, as currently written.
I like to comment, Chair, that you made a comment that we've been pretty lucky. I, I think if we check with the police reports in the last eight years, you'll see that there's been a lot of calls. And I guess, from experience, because I managed property for years up at Tenny, and I still do, that there's been a lot of calls, disturbances. So it's not, it, it may not make police reports and so on, but there, there are calls and issues. And they're simple, some of them are simple issues, like right now, there's a bunch of fiber optic cable being laid, so there's a third-party cable company that's assisting the co-op, and they're parking all their trucks, big bucket trucks. And a lot of the, a lot of the folks up there that live up there, they're, they're taking their parking spots and so on. So there's, there's issues that may not be reported, but there, there are, there are issues.
I never thought about it that way.
It does.
Thank you.
It does seem like what John is bringing up about owner occupancy is also in the kind of original spirit of what, what Airbnb marketed itself as. And I can see how, you know, the, the, what I think the fear would be is that we have a lot of homes that don't have any actual permanent residences in them. So I can see the benefit of regulating in terms of owner occupancy, not primary residence.
I mean, I'm aware of a couple standalone. I mean, I'm aware of a couple standalone small homes that are Airbnb short-term rentals. You know, my, my neighbor's home heads had a, an ADU, basically finished base, finished in-law apartment in the basement that I think over the three owners, only one has actively rented as Airbnb, but they never had any issues.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also starting to get tired, so I'm not thinking as well.
I know, I know. This is, this is an issue we've been dodging, but I, you know.
One, one more thing is that when you Airbnb something, all right, it's supposed to be reg, you're supposed to register with the state, right? You're supposed to be paying taxes and so on. And a lot of these folks that are Airbnb are not doing that.
Are you really?
Putting these provisions in place. Yeah, the state loses, I think if you look.
Rooms and meals.
They've lost 20, 26 million in revenue. I mean, it's a big deal.
Airbnb does take the money and pays it voluntarily to the state on behalf of the.
Is that how it works?
On, on behalf of the host without their option.
Mm-hmm.
So, at least through Airbnb. I don't know about the other platforms, but I heard that a year or two ago.
They did start.
They started taking that money and sending it to the state. Like, never, I guess it never goes to the host, like the.
Happened because states were filing lawsuits against Airbnb.
Oh.
You remember, you gotta, you have to remember that, that only 40% of the market runs through Airbnb front-end. There's a lot of private listings and Google listings too that don't go through a collection agency.
Oh, yeah.
And that revenue's lost.
Yeah.
And there's still short-term rentals, even if it's not Airbnb.
Just through a different.
Word of mouth, right? As I say, we got, it's winter time, skiers, huh? You pass the word around and.
I guess that was my question of what, I think one of Tom's other questions are, can, can we enforce the no beer Airbnb, no short-term rental right now and what are the consequences for that before any changes are decided? Can that enforcement happen?
It certainly can.
Because I'm curious what the issue was with Airbnb and that loss. I, I do know, John, like, or anybody, what did Airbnb take issue with exactly in the wording?
It was Conway versus.
In Conway specifically.
Yeah.
Conway versus short-term rentals.
Joseph has.
Yeah, the Conway case was really an example of, and, and it's not right in front of me, but essentially the definition of a dwelling unit in Conway was kind of the core issue. So when we define dwelling unit in Plymouth, we define that in such a way that it specifically is for non-transient purposes. So if you have a single-family dwelling, you by definition cannot use that for short-term rental, transient rental as defined. In Conway, my understanding is essentially the issue was their definition of a dwelling unit, something like a unit occupied by one household or housekeeping unit or a physical space occupied by a single housekeeping unit, something to that effect, was broad enough that their definition of dwelling unit, I think, did, was seen as encompassing some short-term rental type use. Even though I think their, their intention wasn't for it to, their, their definition was not specific enough that a dwelling unit is not intended to be used, is not allowed to be used for a short-term rental purpose. That's, that's the big picture of the Conway case, as I understand it. Though I know there may have been appeals, but I think it's all settled now. And I do think the answer was that Conway just didn't define appropriately to enforce what they were applying.
So there wouldn't necessarily be any consequences for enforcing laws as is right now. There wouldn't be any legal consequences. You'd just be stopping the short-term rentals.
It would just be, yeah.
Having stayed in a number of Airbnbs over the past 10, 15 years of my life as a traveling musician, I can tell you the business has changed dramatically. And it is, it used to be a really affordable way to travel and most of the time I would be staying with a host. You'd be in their house. I mean, I even got an Airbnb in Scotland. This couple was, couple was great. Stayed over there a couple nights. It was great. The Airbnbs that I have stayed in more recently that are either separate, detached, they're managed by AI and robots most of the time, you have to really tell, you have, like, you can look at a picture and go, oh, that's not run by humans. The whole entire business has changed so dramatically that it is no longer affordable. It's the same rate, if not higher, than hotels. It is not the same company that it used to be. And I know in a number of states, they are requiring owner occupancy, and I think it's for a good reason. Anytime I go to New York City, I believe, very, very specifically in New York City and in New Jersey, you have to have the owner living on the premises. And what that looks like, people are very, very creative with. So people will still find a way. I mean, for instance, you'll walk into a building that has three stories, they'll have built a wall to separate the first floor and they live on the first floor. The second and third floor apartments are rented out. However, there's still a person on the premises. If there's no can opener, you can still call downstairs if something's missing. So I really, I think people are probably still using short-term rentals to try and make up that income because of all the other economic things that are happening right now. They're trying to find any way to make their mortgage payments, have like, pay a little bit less on their rent. So I see the material reality of wanting to have a short-term rental on your property. I do highly, highly think that having an owner on the premises keeps it from becoming something much, much larger. And there are, I mean, with Plymouth, it might not be that type of issue because there aren't that many properties available. But it might encourage something more like a B and B. Because I can tell you, I don't know if anybody else has stayed in B and B, they're great. They're so fun. It's amazing to make connections with people. And I think if we want to, again, go back to that idea of the character of the town, what the intention is, if you want to offer a bed and breakfast, that's a great thing. I think that's awesome, is an alternative, is something more personal than a hotel. But when it comes to short-term rentals, I would really, really highly advocate for the owner occupancy. And as, as it goes with the, the ADU, it seems like having both buildings rented long-term is not an issue. It just really is that short-term rental thing. And so from what I hear is it seems like a better solution would be at least one of the buildings has to have owner occupied. I can imagine if this goes to public hearing, you're going to get a ton of people are like, we're going to have tourists only living, it's going to be, wah! So maybe having some, you know, clear understanding of maybe what potential language could be would be helpful. But as, I don't really use Airbnbs anymore. I stay with friends because they're not, they're, also some of them are terrible experiences and kind of like what Tom was talking about. Like, I had one place where it was literally just a piece of canvas hung up in a corner with a bed in it and the canvas was the wall and there were some boxes stacked on the side. And I was like, whoa, this is not what the pictures looked like. So it's like, there, I think that it's the type of thing where I think regulation does actually benefit everyone, or at least a sort of standard that is set to protect the business owners, to protect the people who are paying for the space and to protect the town and just have general consistency throughout the town because we are not New York City, we are much smaller, it can be more personal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say something real quick because it's gone on longer than I intended to. But I'd be more than happy to work with Joseph, to put together some bullet points of things that, like when I work with the planning board in Ashland, they've looked for my input on different things and I'll say, okay, these are some of the, these are the issues they were experiencing on the ground. And here are some bullet points that maybe we check off. Yes, this we want to include, this we want to include. And so that we can at least come back here in your next meeting and have some talking points to say, yeah, you know what, I think this, these are some things we'd like to see. These is, no, these we don't want.
Okay, stand right there for one second. Don't, don't sit down or don't leave. Do we want to discuss this at a work session?
Yes.
On November, first, first week in November?
Yes.
We'll make sure we add this to the agenda.
Yes.
Tom can work with Joseph, they can put some things together, put it front of us so we can have this discussion then.
We invite Tom to be part of the discussion.
Hundred percent.
If you're, if you're so inclined.
Absolutely. This is my baby. This is, this is why I'm here.
I think it's really unfortunate that he has not been able to do his job because either it's been on hold for whatever reason you were told not to close these down or whatever. I think it's unfortunate for the neighbors that have to put up with these people that they do have to call the police on. What can they do? They can go shut the noise down, but it's, it's still there. I just think that it's something that we either need to sit down and discuss and get this going or not. Just one thing or another, let him do his job, let him regulate the thing, get these out of here or get him in here with some, with whatever rules we decide.
All right, let's plan on.
Let's do it.
I think the discussion is over.
Fantastic.
Start.
For hitting Joseph. A lot of homework.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Appreciate it. All right, does that, that sounds good, everyone, I think?
Yeah.
Perfect.
And as quickly as we can get some public input on that, the better.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So we don't just spring this on people like.
Yeah, because, well, it's not new.
It's not, it's not.
We've been waiting, we've been waiting for this housing.
We're putting our minds together, we're going to try to come up with a solution that's right for Plymouth. We're going to have a couple hearings. You know, obviously we can, if the first hearing we get input that people aren't happy with it, we can make changes and go to, you know, make, take the change version to public hearing again.
Yeah.
This is, there's no rush. We have time in advance of town meeting. But I've heard from more than a few people for and against this, but, you know, I think it's a question that we're right to put to the voters.
Yep.
Get the word out. I'll close the public comments. Thank you very much, everyone, tonight. And we'll move on to.
I move to a jorn.
Second.
Call on paper.
Aye.
Closed or abstentions. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.